Good evening, everybody. I would like to welcome you and call the June 12, 2025 Royal Oak School Board of Education regular meeting to order at 6:30. I'd like to invite you to stand if you're willing and able for the Pledge of Allegiance. I'd like to ask now if there are any additions, deletions, or adjustments to the agenda. I'll start, and I would like to add item 4.4, which is a resolution for the retirement of Superintendent Fitzpatrick. Trustee Van Heidsma.
Yes, I'd like to add two items under recognitions. Item 6.5, Royal Oak Schools Foundation: Recognition of Fitzpatrick Superintendent Retirement. And item 6.6, Student Board Member Recognition.
Any other additions or deletions to tonight's agenda? See, none of the agenda is approved as amended. This is to item 3.2, which is approval of the minutes. We have a motion to approve the minutes as listed. Trustee Alexander.
Resolve that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education approves the following minutes: April 30, 2025, Special Minutes; May 1, 2025, Special Minutes, Finance and Facilities; May 8, 2025, Regular Minutes; May 9, 2025, Special Minutes; May 13, 2025, Special Minutes; May 14, 2025, Special Minutes; and May 16, 2025, Special Minutes.
Thank you.
Trustee Jocinski, is there any discussion on the motion? See, none. A call for a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Item 3.3, which is donations and recognitions. Ask Superintendent Fitzpatrick to take this.
Yes, thank you. Well, first, I would just like to recognize Chartwell's. I believe Mr. Jacobs is here. He left? All right. So every year, we're blessed that the Chartwell's Company presents a scholarship for student at Royal Oak High School. And Chartwell's is a wonderful community partner for us, providing our food service here and also has helped us with our sustainability efforts this year. And Mr. Jacobs and his team does a wonderful job. And this is just another recognition, I believe, of their contribution to our district and our student directly benefit. So I just want to recognize Chartwell's for the $2,000 scholarship. And then, secondly, the Oakland PTA, in terms of all the hard work there and being able to make a generous donation worth $5,500 for what I understand is a very popular basketball hoop out on the playground over at Oakland. So our students there will also benefit, and just want to recognize both of those this evening.
Thank you. And do we have a motion? Trustee Van Heidsma.
Be it resolved that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education gratefully accepts the following donations as presented: $2,000 Chartwell's for scholarship and $5,500 from the Oakland PTA basketball hoop for playground.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Trustee Cook. Is there any discussion on the motion? See, no call for a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion's carried.
Mr. Jocinski. Sorry, did we... Mr. Taylor, did you want to say anything about the basketball hoop? Nope. Okay, never mind then. We're excited. Oakland's excited about the basketball hoop.
Lawrence excited about basketball. Which brings us to agenda item four this evening, which are our proclamations. 4.1 is the LGBTQIA+ and Pride Month Resolution. And I'm going to ask trustee Alexander to present that.
Thank you. Whereas our students, families, and staff have the right to be treated consistent with their gender, identity, and sexual orientation at school; and whereas LGBTQIA+ students report higher rates of being bullied or harassed at school, resulting in higher rates of dropouts, academic failure, and disengagement; and whereas LGBTQIA+ students in Royal Oak Schools are bright, brilliant youths engaged in self and social liberation despite this bullying and harassment; and whereas bullying or harassment that targets a student based on their sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression is discriminatory harassment; whereas the district is committed to maintaining self, healthy, safe, healthy, and welcoming learning environments for all members of our community, including transgender and gender expansive students; and whereas the month of June is an opportunity to celebrate the narratives, identities, and contributions of those within the LGBTQIA+ community; and whereas we recognize the struggle for equal rights continues today and are committed to expand partnerships, policy reviews, and updates, and opportunities to exercise learning courage to further our journey toward gender inclusive schools. And whereas by recognizing Pride Month, we affirm that supportive school environment substantially improve the mental health and school engagement of LGBTQIA+ students; and whereas our students have the right to engage in reflection and honest conversations in school communities on issues of social justice, equity, and the intersectionality of oppression and discrimination; and whereas by recognizing Pride Month, we affirm our commitment to a supportive environment that promotes trust, growth, and achievement for all students. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education endorses and encourages our community to participate in Pride Month of June 2025. Now therefore, be it finally resolved that Royal Oak Schools will fly a pride flag for the entirety of June unless otherwise directed by the Board of Education.
What are you thinking? Do we have a second? Trustee Anderson. Is there any discussion on the motion? No? On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Proclamation has been accepted. Bring this to item 4.2, which is National Gun Violence Awareness Month proclamation. I'd like to ask trustee Jocinski to present that.
Thank you. This proclamation declares the month of June to be National Gun Violence Awareness Month in Royal Oak Schools to honor and remember all victims and survivors of gun violence and to promote gun safety in our community. Whereas June is National Gun Violence Awareness Month; and whereas an estimated 4.6 million United States children live in households with at least one loaded unlapped firearm; and whereas guns are a leading cause of death, or the leading cause of death, among children and teens in Michigan; and whereas in 2024, there were at least 360 incidents of someone under the age of 18 unintentionally shooting themselves or someone else; and whereas every year in the United States, another 590 children die by gun suicide, most often using guns belonging to a family member; and over the past decade, the firearm suicide rate among children and teens has increased by 59%. And whereas regarding incidents of gun violence on school grounds, 76% of shooters under the age of 18 obtained their guns from their home or the home of a relative or friend. And whereas Royal Oak Schools will continue to share information regarding safe firearm storage and provide gun locks free of charge to our community in accordance with House Bill 5450 and 5451; and whereas Royal Oak Schools supports policies and funding that maintain and strengthen district capacity to provide a healthy and safe learning environment; and whereas the district supports threat assessment programs in schools, security upgrades, effective emergency planning, and responsible firearm storage, among other safety measures. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education declares the month of June 2025 to be National Gun Violence Awareness Month. We encourage all community members to join us in renewing our commitment to do all that we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe.
What are you thinking? Do we have a second? Trustee Wiki. Any discussion on the proclamation? See, no call for a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Proclamation has been adopted. Item 4.3, which is proclamation in honor of Paula Sutterfield's retirement. Whereas Paula Sutterfield has dedicated 16 years of exceptional service to the student, staff, and community of the Royal Oak Schools, serving with distinction as executive assistant to the superintendent and board of education; and whereas throughout her remarkable tenure, Ms. Sutterfield has been an indispensable pillar of support, demonstrating unparalleled organizational skills, unwavering discretion, and a steadfast commitment to the smooth and efficient operation of the central administration and board. Whereas Ms. Sutterfield has provided invaluable assistance to multiple superintendents and numerous board of education members, ensuring the seamless flow of communication, the meticulous management of critical documents, and the precise coordination of countless meetings, events, and initiatives. And whereas her profound institutional knowledge, meticulous attention to detail, and proactive approach have been crucial in navigating complex administrative tasks, preparing comprehensive reports and maintaining the vital records that underpin the district's operations; and whereas Ms. Sutterfield has consistently exemplified professionalism, dedication, and collegial spirit, serving as a trusted, confident, and reliable resource for all who've sought her assistance and has been instrumental in fostering a positive environment within the superintendent's office and board chambers. And whereas the Board of Education and the entire Royal Oak Schools community recognize with immense gratitude the tireless efforts and profound impact of Paula Sutterfield on the effective governance and day-to-day success of our school district. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education does hereby honor Paula Sutterfield for her outstanding service and dedication to public education. Be it further resolved that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education extends its sincere appreciation for her invaluable contributions and wish her retirement filled with health, happiness, and well-deserved rest, knowing that her legacy of excellence will continue to resonate within our district. And be it finally resolved that this resolution be duly recorded in the official minutes of the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education in a copy presented to Paula Sutterfield as a token of our profound respect and admiration. Do we have a second? Trustee Cook. Any discussion on the proclamation? Ms. Van Heidsma.
Well, I can only echo what was already stated, but having known Paula for eight years, starting on the board with her, has just meant the world to me. And being president for the two years was just like, she was my right-hand person to just help me and guide me and answer questions that I had. So truly appreciate it. I hope you have a wonderful retirement and have lots of fun.
Trustee Anderson.
I've been lucky enough to be with Paula for the whole 15 years. And it's been an honor, and it's been a privilege. And in addition to all those things that you said, and they're all true, Paula's a lot of fun. I'm not so much, I think she's going to keep pretty busy. I don't know about that well-deserved rest, but we'll see. But yeah, best wishes, and you deserve all the good things in life. Thank you.
Ms. Sutterfield, would you come and get your proclamation? All in favor of accepting the proclamation signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Proclamation has been adopted. This brings us to new item 4.4, which is the resolution for the retirement of Mary Beth Fitzpatrick. Bear with me, the color on this is very hard to read. Whereas Superintendent Mary Beth Fitzpatrick has dedicated eight years of exemplary service to the student, staff, and community of the Royal Oak Schools; and whereas throughout her distinguished tenure, Superintendent Fitzpatrick has demonstrated exceptional leadership, unwavering commitment, and a profound vision for educational excellence, fostering an environment where every student is encouraged to achieve their full potential. And whereas under her guidance, Royal Oak Schools has achieved remarkable milestones, including the successful implementation of innovative educational programs, enhanced professional development opportunities for educators, and expanded community partnerships. And whereas Superintendent Fitzpatrick has consistently championed equitable opportunities for all students, advocated tirelessly for the resources necessary to support their diverse needs and built strong collaborative relationships with parents, teachers, administrators, and community stakeholders. Her profound dedication, integrity, and compassionate approach have left an indelible mark on the lives of countless students who have inspired a culture of continuous improvement and innovation within our schools. Whereas the Board of Education and the entire Royal Oak Schools community recognize with deep gratitude and measurable contributions of Superintendent Mary Beth Fitzpatrick to the growth, success, and well-being of our school system. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education does hereby formally commend and honor Superintendent Mary Beth Fitzpatrick for her outstanding service and dedication to public education. Be it further resolved that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education extends its sincere appreciation for her transformative leadership and wishes her retirement filled with health, happiness, and well-deserved rest. And be it finally resolved that this resolution be duly recorded in the official minutes of the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education in a copy presented to Superintendent Mary Beth Fitzpatrick as a token of our profound respect and admiration. Do we have a second? Trustee Wiki. Any discussion? Trustee Van Heidsma.
Well, excuse me. So eight years together too. It's been some ups and downs. I think back to the COVID years and the remote meetings and the challenges that I think anybody in education faced during that time and appreciative of your leadership during that time because it just wasn't easy, I think, for any of us. It wasn't easy for the parents. It wasn't easy for the staff. It wasn't easy for the kids. It wasn't easy for us. So but, and that, and your support of the board's commitments as well is just so greatly appreciated. And your involvement in the community is just huge. So I'm very grateful for all your time and effort, and you have a good time too. Thank you.
Trustee Anderson.
I just want to say that we're going to miss you. We get to keep you around for another month and a half, so that's pretty great. But we will miss you. The district will miss you, and the students will miss you and your dedication to all of their well-being. And believe me, we appreciate you very much.
Trustee Jocinski.
Just an official, formal thank you, right in front of everyone on record. Like you said earlier, in your retirement, little celebration. There's going to be like a lot of goodbyes and stages over the next month. But this is, I think, an important step, right, for us all here. And I've just been honored to work with you, and just you've taught me so much about the ways that schools should run. And I think you're leaving us in very, very good hands, and we're going to take good care of this district for you.
For anyone else? Mary Beth, it's been my honor to sit next to you for the last six months. I do joke that I became president and she retired shortly after, so it might be my fault. But I'll thank you for everything you've done, and you've left us with a great foundation. In addition to your proclamation... We have the middle school yearbook. And your real senior year book that I brought around. It's signed by all the administrators and board. If you can read her writing. Any other discussion? Call for a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Proclamation has been adopted. Brings us to item five on tonight's agenda, which is the first opportunity for public comment. A person may address the board on an agenda or non-agenda item by completing a note card located inside the boardroom and place a card in the basket or just bring it up with you to the table. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If you need more time, you are offered a second opportunity to address the board at the end of the meeting with an additional three minutes. Please address the board as a whole, not individually. Public comment is not intended for the exchange of dialogue. This is a time for members of the public to express their views. We are paying attention to your comments, and we do appreciate them. However, school board members do not respond to public comment during the meeting. Questions that arise from public comments shall be referred to the superintendent or her designee for review, study, and a possible future response. To thank you in advance for your cooperation. This time, we have one member of the audience, Jessica Spencer.
Hi, I'm Jessica Spencer, and I'm a parent at Oak Ridge, and I'm here to express my upset at the elementary school Spanish cuts. I've heard a lot of talk about the losses and the lost potential of these cuts, and I agree with them. And I also agree that the program was a bit underwhelming. I've heard a lot of people say that too. But its existence showed an intention for a broader range of learning that many people in this community, including myself, value deeply. Rather than focus on the loss and lost potential from this cut, though, I would like to focus on the utter lack of planning and communication from this cut. And it worries me just as much. Teachers and parents weren't consulted at all. Teachers were notified hours before parents were. And the email was, had a lot of like, great terminology in it that seemed to me to be designed to lead parents to believe that there was a plan, but I could not discern a plan from this email. As of today, so I want to know who these certified teachers are going to be. Are new people being hired, or are they the teachers that we already have? As of today, there's no job postings that would fulfill this role. If you hire more teachers, why not remedy the 700 to 1 student-teacher ratio of the Spanish teachers? I don't understand how a classroom, general classroom teacher who doesn't speak Spanish is supposed to replace the Spanish that's being lost. And a lot of people, my kid doesn't go to Keller, but how is the IB program at Keller going to, what's going on there? Like, there's a language requirement for that. There's a lot of obvious concerns that weren't addressed. I looked up what information I could. And for the fifth graders last year, the lowest proficiency across the district was social studies. It wasn't math, and it wasn't science. It was social studies. When I emailed Dr. Yuanis, I did not get any answers. I was not, I asked for resources, like what resources were being changed? What funding? What philosophy is justifying this change? And no data was provided, no links to any information, nothing was provided. I was assured that it was a complicated and thoughtful decision, but I don't, I believe it was complicated, but there's some explanation with actual numbers should have been able to be provided. Let's see. He twice tried to take the conversation to a phone call, which I declined because if this was a data-driven decision, then there should have been data to provide. And I hope that the practice of moving it to a phone call is not a district policy either. I really hope that some kind of comprehensive plan surrounding this change is getting ready to be presented because I'm just, I have so much more to say that cannot be said in three minutes. And yeah, I'm all set. I'm done. Thank you for hearing me out.
Thank you. Any other members of the audience who wish to speak? Go ahead, sir. If you could do us a favor and fill out a card before you leave, just so we can get back to you?
Before or after?
You can speak now. Just, if you leave us a card, we can get back to you. Yeah, no worries.
No, okay. So my name's Jeremy Lipton. I have a daughter who's just finishing her junior year at the high school. And I don't want to bring down the end of the year, but the culture shift, I feel like needs to be brought to your attention. What used to really be a culture that fostered curiosity and growth and teacher-student collaboration this year really turned to one that was punitive and discouraged conversation, discouraged question-asking, and teachers specifically one. You know, when my daughter sent an email to ask questions, got a response in class about how the teacher's tired of receiving emails asking for help. Students who didn't need help were rewarded. Students who needed help were punished. And that culture can't be tolerated, not in this district. It's just not acceptable. So for anybody who wasn't aware, now you are, and let's fix it, because we can do better.
There for you. Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Thank you, Ms. Lipton. Did I see another hand towards the back of the room? Come on up. Also, if you could fill out a card before I leave, just so we can get back to you, we'd appreciate that.
Hi, I'm Katie Slajus. I'm sorry I didn't fill out a card. This is the very first board meeting that I've ever come to. I am actually here because of Jessica and I want to thank her for speaking today on behalf of many of us families that are concerned about the STEM program that's going to be implemented. I have been an early childhood educator for 20 years and one of the things that is most concerning about this, in addition to the lack of explanation of how it's even going to work or happen, is the amount of screen time that is potential with this. My daughter just completed her very first year in kindergarten at Upton Elementary. She is thriving, she loves school, it's a wonderful place there, we love it, except her comment to me about my preschoolers and how do they know, basically she was saying how to move their bodies when they were doing brain breaks and music time because they have a smart board that is on in the classroom a great number of hours during the day. That's a screen. And the fact that she has, within a year, nine months really, forgotten how to use her imagination and move her body the way that she wants to without watching Kids Bop Kids show her how to do that, breaks my early childhood educator heart. Early childhood is through age eight, that's third grade. I would like to see a lot less screens and if you are implementing more technology, more engineering, I think that's wonderful, but I would like to see hands on and no screens. I know that iReady is a great program as well, but that's just a smaller screen that they're looking at. My child is still five, she just had her last day of school, she's not even six yet, and she stares at a screen all day at school. Thank you for your time.
For you, thank you. Anybody else in the audience who cares to speak at this time? Thank you. Brings us to agenda item number six, which is recognitions. And item 6.1 is the employment of superintendent, or otherwise known as the contract for a new superintendent. Do you think, Mr. Wilinski, are you going to speak to this?
Yeah, I would be happy to. With us this evening is our incoming superintendent, John Tofalski, and I believe John has his wife and beautiful daughters here with him this evening. Do you have a contract, does he sign his contract tonight? Oh, he did. So, as you, okay.
I'm not excited at all.
Wasn't sure it was going to be official tonight, he's got his family.
I think I was supposed to wait, but I signed it, like, yeah, I got it.
Though John is not official yet, he has been here quite a bit and has already begun working with us and collaborating with us. So, certainly we're sad to see Ms. Fitzpatrick go, but couldn't be more excited to have John on board and really excited, think great things for him are going to happen here in Royal Oak.
Dr. Tofalski, would you come up to the table, please? So, as Mr. Wilinski said, we've had the last few weeks since the formal processes ended to work together here in Royal Oak and we do have another month and a half together to do so. And it's been amazing to see him, you know, begin to make all the connections with the community members. He doesn't really live far from here, so that'll be a nice addition and he's very familiar with the Royal Oak area. But, Dr. Tofalski, if you'd like to make a statement at this time, it's, please do.
I really appreciate the opportunity. I'd like to thank the board members, thank Ms. Fitzpatrick. She's been an unbelievable leader in the transition. We've only known each other a short time, but all that I heard and all of the wonderful things that everybody said about her as an educational leader and as a person has rang true. She's unbelievable, she's going to be missed, like, I'm not going to be able to fill her shoes, I hope to do a nice job, as trustee Jusinski said, of just like, you know, kind of holding serve for her. But to the cabinet, I really appreciate the warmth and welcome that I've gotten since I've been here. It's really been great, same thing to the administration. And the community has been extremely welcoming, I've been at a handful of events, I brought my daughters to some, I'm happy that Ray's ice cream brings their cart places because they certainly enjoy it. And I appreciate the community coming out, I mentioned this at my first interview, but I really appreciate the passion and the advocacy that the community has, so. And last but not least, I'd like to thank my family. This is my daughter Lucy, she is 10, my wife Nassim, age redacted, and my daughter Bee, she is six, Lucy's going into fifth grade, Bee is going into second grade, and then my mother-in-law Perry Vash, my mom Belinda, Linda, and my dad Bill. And I have to acknowledge them because while I'm here serving the students in the community of Royal Oak, they're going to be helping with my two lovely daughters who will probably also be here on occasion, running around and doing all of those wonderful things. So, I could not be more excited. Again, I truly thank the board for the opportunity, I will not let you down, I promise. We're going to, we're going to work to do amazing things in Royal Oak and continue the traditions that Marybeth has started and I'm really looking forward to diving into it. So, thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you. We can motion and then we can have discussion. Trustee Van Heetsma.
Be it resolved that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education approve the contract with Dr. John Tofalski as Royal Oak Superintendent of Schools as presented.
Do we have a second? Trustee Jusinski. Any discussion on the motion? Trustee Van Heetsma.
You will learn, Dr. Tofalski, I always have something to say. So, just welcome, welcome to be here, we're excited to have you join us in July 1st officially. And I know I've seen you within the community, so we're very excited about that because one thing about Royal Oak is we're very community-oriented and we are in the community in a lot of spaces and we feel that's really important to engage. And thank you for your family for being here to support you, that's always very cool to know that you have a supportive family in this work that you do because it's a lot. Truly appreciate it and we look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Trustee Anderson.
I want to welcome you and your family. It's great to have all of you here. As Maryann said, it's a lot, so it's great to have a support system, so we appreciate everyone being here. And does this mean after we vote, I can sign this contract? I'm the secretary, so I have to sign it.
Any other discussion from the board? Trustee Wiki.
Yeah, John, it's been good getting to know you so far. I look forward to more of that.
Yes, absolutely.
Anybody else? I would like to welcome Dr. Tofalski to Royal Oak. Like I said, you brought your moms, we have to sign the contract now.
And President Charsky, I'm going to need you to let my daughter know when I'm going to be home late, she is always like, Dad, are you coming home? Dad, when are we going?
Lucy, be your dad, ask me the most important question that you asked him, he said you wanted to know if there were rolling chairs and hallways, like his old office. I guarantee you, we have a lot of rolling chairs and there's a lot of hallways.
Bee already grabbed Marybeth's and was like, rolling around her office, we're like, not, not yet, guys, come on. Give me, like, let them say yes first.
Are the chairs good enough? Do we need better chairs?
I think so.
Excellent. Again, welcome, John.
Thank you.
Ready for a vote? On favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion is carried, congratulations, Dr. Tofalski.
Thank you very much.
He might be home late some days, just saying, just sometimes.
Or if you want us to keep him late, let us know.
I will let you know.
Yeah.
Your emails are public, so.
That's right. I'm going to take a picture outside and then I'll come back in.
Thank you.
Brings to item 6.2 tonight, which is Royal Oak High School Figure Skating Students. Mr. Loomis. I'd like to welcome up Mr. Loomis.
Thank you so much. Here, here? Okay. So, we have a combined figure skating team from Berkeley, Royal Oak, and Ferndale. So, it's a Berkeley, Royal Oak, Ferndale unified team. If we have members of that team here tonight, I'd really like you to come on up and be welcomed. So, you guys know, just as we get to, I want you to introduce yourself and if there's anything that you've won individually or in a team, to say that, okay? I have some more things to say here. But, so, there are three different levels, A, B, and C. We have a B team and a C team. The B team has two high school students on the team, our C team has six high school students. Our B team won first in districts and qualified for states, and our C team came in second place in the district, which also qualified for them four states. At the state competition, a few of our skaters took home personal medals for individual competition and for individual competition, the unified team came in fifth in the state.
Real quick, to the parents taking pictures, feel free to get up closer.
So, oh, can you guys scoot this way a little bit? There you go, and up a little bit.
It's okay.
People are trying to take pictures, it's all good. All right, so, some more. Two of our, two student athletes medaled in the finals, one bringing home placing second overall in the state and one bringing home gold in their individual events. Two of our students made reach the podium in their groups, one brought home gold and the other a bronze medal in their events. So, and then they moved into the finals with one student placing fourth overall in state and the other placing eighth in their events. In team competition, our B team placed second overall in the state and the C team placed eighth overall in the state. So, I just want to recognize them because these are, these are some students that sometimes that don't necessarily get the recognition that our other athletes do and quite honestly, these are some amazing athletes because I get on roller skates and I'm that shaky man. So, but I imagine you guys are great at it. So, again, one at a time, if you'll introduce yourselves and talk about your achievements real quick and I'd appreciate that, thanks.
My name is Colin Bibbs. I won my event, I got state champion, I ice danced, and then I'm also training for national qualifiers right now for ice dance with my partner.
Hi, my name is Molly Cornmiller and in the first round of my events, I got gold and in the second round, I got fourth place.
I'm Olivia Wondoff and in my first competition, I got third and then the second time, I got second.
Hi, I'm Aislan and for my first competition, I got third and my second, I got eighth.
Hi, my name is Peyton Foddy and I did not compete in individuals due to injury.
So, just wanted to thank all those students and all the hard work you do and we're so proud of you. Thank you so much.
I think we have a parent who would...
So, I'm actually the one who reached out to the board. These kids, these kids are amazing. They do this all year round. This is not a sport where they do it for three months out of the year and that's it. This is something that they will be practicing all summer long. Peyton underplayed herself a little bit, she's an amazing spinner, she also does synchronized skating on top of her personal private lessons, the team, she's awesome. Colin is involved in so many different things. Our other three that medaled at states are freshmen, but they're just awesome. Thanks for recognizing them.
Any discussion from the board? Trustee Van Heetsma.
Just a, they're still here, just a huge congratulations and I'm going to be embarrassed to admit, I didn't know we had students that were skaters. So, I'm really glad to hear that there's, you know, sports for everybody and kudos to you, that's, you have really good ankles. But, but that's amazing too, to be able to compete and do that well, so congratulations. Thank you.
Trustee Wiki.
So, Olivia and her mother Christina, who just spoke, I mean, they're neighbors of mine and friends of mine, and I can tell you, this really is an all-year, we call it avocation or vocation, it's more like a vocation. So, I mean, they're dedicated to this, Olivia has done this for as long as I've known her, which seems like a long time, so it's a serious commitment.
Wonder if Olivia can teach trustee Wiki how to do a triple salto?
That's not going to happen.
And please come back next month and do it for us. Superintendent Fitzpatrick.
Thank you. Well, I'd also like to thank the students and parents. This is definitely a sport that is not well-known and I hope many of your classmates from across your respective schools know much more about it. But one thing I would ask is that as we honor our students, the one good thing I love about it is that there are others sitting at home watching this or hearing about this that say, A, I didn't know we had a team, this is awesome, and how do I get involved? So, if you wouldn't mind, I would love if you would forward information about it to me and then we will work to not only promote you and recognize you on our social media or additionally on our social media, but also share more about the sport so we can get more folks out and get more energy behind it, working with you. So, congratulations on your achievements and I know with the young grades you spoke of, there's just many more years to come, so congratulations, we're very proud of you.
Okay, so, having done ice skating a lot by myself and having to stop because of injury, ice skating has to be one of the hardest things I have ever done, only because the place where I do it is the John Linden Ice Arena, there are these little kids who like to speed skate laps and they make it impossible to actually like, practice or anything. So, if they, if they train there on days of free skate, I want to say, good job for one missing those kids and not hitting them. And two, amazing ankles. Three, keep your feet safe, I messed mine up so bad, I cannot skate anymore. Please do be careful, please stretch and have fun, most definitely.
Any other comments from the board? Excellent. Moving on to item 6.3, which is the Northwood 100. I'd like to ask Principal Bascom Keller to come up.
Hi, it's actually me.
We're together.
Hello, thank you, everyone. I'm Amy Murphy, the communications specialist for the district, and I work a lot with the community, so I worked with the state of Michigan in honoring our wonderful Northwood Elementary with their 100 years. So, I have a little bit to read and we have a cute little short video for you. But we are celebrating a milestone tonight for Northwood Elementary School, 100 years of learning, leadership, and community. Northwood opened its doors in 1923 and has been a vibrant part of the Royal Oak community ever since. Once a two-room schoolhouse, this school on the corner of 12 Mile has seen many changes, including demolition, a new building, a bond expansion, and further facility upgrades. From its rich history to its innovative programs today, Northwood remains a place where students thrive, families feel connected, and staff work together to build a community that's excellent. As we reflect on the past and look forward to the future, we want to honor Bassel and Campbell with the 100-year milestone on behalf of the state of Michigan.
milestone of 100 years of educating and empowering young minds. For a century, Northwood has been more than just a school. It's been a pillar of the community, shaping generations of students and setting them up for lifelong success. This remarkable anniversary is a testament to the dedication of the teachers, staff, students, and families who help build and sustain such a strong tradition of excellence. I'm proud to be a part of recognizing this moment in Northwood Elementary School's history. Congratulations again on 100 years.
All right. And we do have some other proclamations coming from the county. We have one over there. We also have another one from the state and the city. We just learned today that the city of Royal Oak is going to build, plant a 100-year-old tree for the 100-year-old school. So thank you to the city of Royal Oak, too. Molly?
I'm here with Mary Ann Campbell, who's one of our wonderful teachers and has been at Northwood a long time and had her children there. For both of us, on behalf of Northwood and our entire school community, thank you so much to Royal Oak Schools and School Board. Thank you to Oakland County, the city of Royal Oak, the state of Michigan, and everyone who's been involved for celebrating Northwood's history and the 100-year educational contribution to the city of Royal Oak. We hope that there are many, many more years to come and we are thrilled with the celebrations and very appreciative. Thank you. There you go.
I could do also want to mention that State Representative Natalie Price did intend to be here this evening with a proclamation from the Michigan State House of Representatives. She is stuck at work. She's still in Lansing. The session ran much later than she thought it would and she couldn't make it here in time. And she does send her regrets. Any discussion on the 100 or 102 or 103-year-old Northwood? Trusty Cook.
Well, I just want to say that my son attended Northwood Elementary. And so watching that video was a bit of a nostalgia for me to go back to that. And I feel like this milestone kind of snuck up on us because we did build a new building there. But that community, we need to honor that that school community has been in place for over 100 years, right? 100, 100, 102? Depends on where you want to make the delineation. I had looked at another video of this where they talked about the previous setup and there used to be a big sledding hill. So if we could reincorporate that, that would be pretty cool, I think. And I just wanted to say that when we were playing that video, I'm not sure that it was being broadcast. So if we could put in the notes about how people can watch this incredible video honoring the Northwood School. Thanks.
Any other comments from the board? Trusty Vianitsma.
Just real quick, too. So thank you, Molly, for being here and Mary Ann for being here. It's very cool to recognize the building. And, you know, so if anybody remembers the old Northwood, it looked like it was put together by Lego sets because there's the building and then it was added on to and then it was added on to. And if you ever walked through, it was just like kind of an interesting construction project. So, you know, and again, that's where we are so grateful to the community to support the building of a new building through a bond. And so, and yes, my kids went sledding at that sledding hill and they were very sad when it was gone. But, you know, thank you again to the community and thank you, Molly, for being here and supporting that school.
Trusty Wiki.
I think that hill was actually a design feature. Like somebody meant it to be a sledding hill. It wasn't just like a left by glaciers or anything like that. Good idea.
Any other comments from the board? Perfect. Thank you. Bring us to Agenda Item 6.4 tonight, which is an award recognition. And I'll ask Superintendent Fitzpatrick to present that.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chahorsky. I always say that, you know, come May and June, we celebrate our students and their accomplishments. In May, we recognized our staff, our entire staff, and thanked them for their contributions to the district and the community all month long. But now we also have some additional staff members that have been nominated and recognized by organizations within our county and our area, and I want to recognize them. Carrie Lawrence was recognized as Counselor of the Year by the Oakland Counseling Association. And we all know how important counselors are to the well-being of our students. And I know our counselors also support their colleagues. And sometimes we also forget that they need support as well because the work that they do is very serious and complex and they play a vital role in our district. So I want to congratulate Carrie, who couldn't be with us tonight, but thank her for her service and this wonderful recognition. Angela Almas, working over in Churchill, was the 2025 Support Person of the Year by the Oakland County Community and Adult Educators Association. And that's also a wonderful recognition of a program that we have. It's a wonderful community resource. And to have folks like Angela working with that entire community and lending her support by working in that office and being a support to the students, adults, young adults, and the peers there. So congratulations to Angela. I'd also like to recognize Kathy Abella. Kathy was recognized as the 2024-25 Oakland County Business Administrator of the Year, voted on by her peers for all of Oakland County and the 28 public school districts there. So congratulations to Kathy. Do you want to hold up your award there? So several of us were able to attend a ceremony out at the county with her peers there. It was a surprise for her and her family joined us in creating a wonderful surprise. But I'll just read a little bit of what went into the application for her. The demands on central office administrators are vast, but the enormous pressure on business officials in the last five years has increased exponentially. The number of grants, funds, fundraisers, payment flow-throughs, and the navigation of all the state, local, and federal government expectations have all been increasingly demanding. Kathy Abella has expertly balanced all of those demands, requiring skilled work from account owners, administrators, and by her team members. She holds us all to very high standards. She takes pride in her work and she protects the district's financial stability and overall functioning through all of operations, which are all high priorities for her. She also oversees the maintenance and custodial team, food service, and she's a contributing member to our cabinet team here at the district level. And for these and many, many other reasons, it's a recognition well-deserved. And we're also very proud as a district that the Business Official of the Year came from our district, as recognized by across Oakland County, which, you know, has a high and strong reputation for all of the work in several of our peer districts. But to have this person come from our district is a double honor. And I'm blessed to have been able to work with Kathy for eight years. So Kathy, thank you for all your contributions and congratulations to you. So a fun fact about Kathy is that she not only contributes here in the district, but she also contributes in her own community, her own church. And she has brought us our beloved therapy dog, Cooper, who comes to work with her often. And we love to see you, but we also love Cooper being here. So Cooper will have extra treats tomorrow. So thank you for that. And also, we also recognize Paula Sutterfield this evening for her retirement. But I also want to let you know that Paula Sutterfield was nominated and is recognized on a plaque in our hallway here as the Support Person of the Year for Royal Oak. In all of the years that, and these are some things that President Chahorsky had to say about her as well as her peers, everyone is always impressed by Paula's professionalism, dedication, and remarkable contributions to our district. The work that we do here at the district is very demanding. It requires a high level of skill and confidentiality. And I believe that in having Paula work alongside of me for eight years, this is a recognition well-deserved by her. And so through our application to the county, she is on record as our Support Person of the Year from across the county, is supported by letters from Amy Murphy, Mr. Chahorsky, and myself out there. So I just want to thank Paula for all of her work. It's been a long goodbye for the last couple of months and she will be sorely missed. Her last day with us is next week, Friday, so we'll be celebrating all week long. So Paula, thank you for this and congratulations on your honor as Support Person of the Year.
Any discussion from the board on Item 6.4? Senior, I'll go to you. Edit Item 6.5, which is the Royal Oak School Foundation Presentation for Superintendent Fitzpatrick.
May I go to the podium?
Absolutely.
Thank you. I would actually like to call up our other board members that were able to make it this evening. So for those of you that are watching that don't know, Royal Oak Schools Foundation has been in existence for over 30 years. And we are in existence to help support public education, specifically Royal Oak Schools. And so we've been very fortunate. I brought a little list of some things the foundation has been able to do, things such as supporting textbooks for middle school, high school, Churchill Community Center, emotional, social, emotional, and well-being projects, literacy projects, other grants, the instrumental music jumpstart program that we do every year. And so Ms. Fitzpatrick has been part of that with us, sits on us, comes to our golf outings, did the farm market haul with us during COVID, and so many other things. And I'm not as eloquent as others with the gift of speech, but I did have just a little something to say. It's my haiku, so don't laugh at my haiku. Years of service done, future calls, new chapter starts. Enjoy well-earned rest. Guiding hand departs, echoes of wisdom linger. New dawn lights the path. Long workdays now end, new adventures wait ahead. Enjoy your free time. Years of guiding hearts, Mary Beth shaped Royal Oak. Her light leads us still. A life of service, bridging hearts, minds, and purpose. Legacy shines bright. Mary Beth's dedication to the community through the Royal Oak Schools, the Rotary Club, Chamber of Commerce, Royal Oak Schools Foundation. Blessings in a backpack. And inter-club counsel is truly inspiring. So if anybody else wants to say anything. You've done it.
Oh, I could talk, but I...
And we just wanted to thank you for being part of our team all these years. It's truly appreciated. And I'm so glad that the foundation is able to still continue to support our Royal Oak Schools staff and everything. And there is a little something we left in your office for you that Paula knows. So thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Mary, did you want to introduce your team you had with you?
Oh, I'm sorry. So other board members are Janet Von Eberstein, Kirk Von Eberstein, and Anita Hill. And the foundation is made up of some dedicated retired teachers and Deb Anderson as well. One of our other board members is also on the foundation board.
I want to correct the record. It's Anita Heap.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Not Anita Hill.
Jared, we're gonna edit that. I know that here. Thank you. Sorry. Thank you. I was just gonna move on to the next item.
Good job not crying.
I'm holding it in.
Bring us to Item 6.6, which is our Student Representatives to the Board Recognition.
So the school board, every year, for the past couple of years, has selected students to participate on our Student Board of Ed. And this is totally volunteer. Children apply, students apply, and then we interview them and we want them all to stay. So Charlie Francis is not able to be here with us tonight. He is one of our seniors that graduated and he was on our board with Leilani this past year, that you would see them at the board meetings. I would like to welcome up our other students. We have another senior student who will be leaving us. But if you would all come up and just introduce yourselves, we have Liam Watkins, Grace Hatton, Hanee Nawada, Owen Kruger, Aiden Brock, Leilani, if you want to come up, and Cameron Bayless. Yeah, there we go. If you want to just come up and introduce yourselves. Y'all are gonna have to move this back after I'm done. This is gonna be short. Hi, I'm Leilani Hamilton. I am a rising senior. This is going to be my second year on the school board and it has been amazing.
I'm Liam Watkins. I'm a graduated senior and I'm going to MSU next year. Go Green.
My name is Grace. I'm an upcoming senior this year and I'm so excited for this year and to work with all of you.
Hi, my name is Owen Kruger. I'm a rising junior and I'm excited to work on the Finance and Facilities Committee next year.
Hi, I'm Aiden. I'm a rising junior also and I'm really grateful for the opportunity to work on the Finance and Facilities Committee, too.
Hi, my name is Hanee Nawada. I'm an upcoming senior and I'm really excited for this upcoming year and to work with all of you. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Cameron Bayless. I'm excited to work on Finance and Facilities and see what changes can be done to Royal Oak Schools. Thank you.
Trusty Cook.
Sure. I'd just like to thank the students that have served in this capacity, that are graduating and moving on to other things, and welcome the students who have applied and gotten accepted to these positions. We really value your input and it gives us another, just source of information about, you know, how we can improve schools and what things are working well. And so it's really a great collaboration and so we welcome you.
Trusty Jazinski.
I was lucky enough to attend, yeah, our people are still here. Yeah, so twofold. Liam, thank you for your time and insight. It's been wonderful to get to know you and very excited to see what you do in college. And I was lucky enough to attend a conference recently where a student from Grand Ledge, I believe, is actually a high school student, is working on a piece of legislation to make it a requirement that every high school...
Children apply, students apply, and then we interview them and we want them all to stay. So Charlie Francis is not able to be here with us tonight. He is one of our seniors that graduated, and he was on our board with Leilani this past year, that you would see them at the board meetings. I would like to welcome up our other students. We have another senior student who will be leaving us. But if you would all come up and just introduce yourselves, we have Liam Watkins, Grace Hatton, Hanee Nawada, Owen Kruger, Aiden Brock, Leilani, if you want to come up, and Cameron Bayless. Yeah, there we go. If you want to just come up and introduce yourselves. Y'all are gonna have to move this back after I'm done. This is gonna be short. Hi, I'm Leilani Hamilton. I am a rising senior. This is going to be my second year on the school board, and it has been amazing.
I'm Liam Watkins. I'm a graduated senior, and I'm going to MSU next year. Go Green.
My name is Grace. I'm an upcoming senior this year, and I'm so excited for this year and to work with all of you.
Hi, my name is Owen Kruger. I'm a rising junior, and I'm excited to work on the Finance and Facilities Committee next year.
Hi, I'm Aiden. I'm a rising junior also, and I'm really grateful for the opportunity to work on the Finance and Facilities Committee, too.
Hi, my name is Hanee Nawada. I'm an upcoming senior, and I'm really excited for this upcoming year and to work with all of you. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Cameron Bayless. I'm excited to work on Finance and Facilities and see what changes can be done to Royal Oak Schools.
Have a discussion on item 6.6 from the board. Trustee Cook.
Sure, I'd just like to thank the students that have served in this capacity, that are graduating and moving on to other things, and welcome the students who have applied and gotten accepted to these positions. We really value your input, and it gives us another just source of information about, you know, how we can improve schools and what things are working well. And so it's really a great collaboration, and so we welcome you.
Trustee Jazinski.
I was lucky enough to attend, yeah, our people are still here. Yeah, so twofold. Liam, thank you for your time and insight. It's been wonderful to get to know you and very excited to see what you do in college. And I was lucky enough to attend a conference recently where a student from Grand Ledge, I believe, is actually a high school student, is working on a piece of legislation to make it a requirement that every high school in the state of Michigan put a student member on their school board. And I thought that was really interesting, but also made me feel very, very proud that this is something that we have prioritized and made a priority. And, you know, it was, I think, through the lead of both Mary Ann and Tim, over the last couple of years, it was a project that we made real here because we know that students are our most important voice up here at the table. So it just, yeah, made me proud, and I thought you guys would think that was interesting.
Trustee Van Heidsmann.
Just real quickly, and a huge thank you, guys, for being here tonight, last day of school, too. So to show up to a board meeting is really impressive. And we look forward to your thoughts and ideas next year because you guys have some amazing ideas. So it's always great to have your participation. So thank you very much for wanting to be willing to do this work with us.
I just want to thank Liam, Charlie, and Anna for all the work they've done this past year. They've really engaged, I think, the student body, which was our intention for this from the get-go, to get everyone involved, to get student voice. And I think they did a wonderful job getting the voice of their peers within the school. So thank you again, you guys. Best of luck in your next adventures. Leilani, you're stuck with us for another year. Thank you for coming back. And then welcome to all the new student board reps we have, starting with us. If you want to come next month, you are more than welcome. Bring us to item number seven, which our presentation, 7.1 is the budget presentation. Ask Mrs. Isabella for her presentation.
Good evening. Tonight is our budget presentation for our truth and taxation hearing. Item 12.3.1, later on tonight's agenda, is the L4029, the tax rate request form. Before we get to the actual form, I'd like to show you the changes from last year to now, the millage rate recommendations. The debt rate is 2.2 and was last year. It has remained the same. Our building site sinking fund has been reduced a little bit, and that has to do with the headly rollback. We can only, if the rate of inflation is greater than the rate of, I'm sorry, if the rate of inflation is higher, then we have to roll back the millage so we're not collecting more money than we had intended with the rate. So that's reduced slightly. Our hold harmless millage, I set that with MDE's support. We can collect $589 per pupil. And even though we have authorized up to 3.4 mils, the hold harmless millage has been rolled back permanently to 3.2863 mils, but we can only collect what we need to satisfy $589 per pupil. So that has been reduced this year to 1.0309. And there is some calculations that go on, knowing that the student count goes up and down from each year. So some of that is also plays into that effect of how that changes. So the overall change in the tax levy has gone down .0830, and that's roughly $8.30 for every $100,000 of taxable value. This is what that tax rate form looks like. And once it's signed tonight by two board members, I believe it's president and secretary, that will be sent over to the five municipalities that are a part of Royal Oak Schools, and they wait for that each year with bated breath because they're ready to send out those tax forms. We are a 100% summer levy, so Royal Oak Schools does collect all of those dollars during the summer months, which means we're in a good position since we don't receive our state aid payment until October of each year for the new school year. So this just gives you a little bit of an idea of what that form looks like that will go off to the cities. Legally, we have to have the board approve four budgets each year. That's the general fund, which is a general operation of our K-12 district, the community service fund that houses our early childhood center and our Churchill Alternative High School, the food service fund, which only houses the food service activities, the student activity fund. So those four are required by law. I also have for you tonight the debt retirement fund, and I do that primarily because that's also included on that L4029. So you understand the dollars that go into the levy that you're also approving. And when we get to June 26th, we'll also have the building site sinking fund, the property maintenance fund, and potentially the bond fund. We believe we're getting really close to having that entire amount spent, but if we don't cross that finish line by June 30th, there'll also be a bond fund budget for you as well. We're gonna do budget adoption on June 26th for all of those funds that I just discussed. Budget review is continual. We do each, each fund gets reviewed and amended at least once, if not twice, and the general fund three times throughout the year. So that will be continual through the 25, 26 school year. So we're gonna jump in with the community service fund. So this, now, I just want to remind you, we are not setting these tonight. So these are our first glance at these. They will change between today and two weeks from today as we get more information, as we are paying down additional invoices, salaries to employees making those payments. We're gonna refine this down so that they get a little bit closer. And of course, the 25, 26 year, as we learn more things through the legislature, hopefully we get a little closer to a state school aid budget, we'll be able to incorporate those items into these budgets. So the community service fund, as I mentioned, holds all of the early childhood programs and then our Churchill Alternative High School. So on the left is the, where we're at right now with the amended 24, 25 school year, and then on the right is the 25, 26 original budget. What we've done a little differently is we actually have all of the revenue that's created by the early childhood center goes directly into this fund. And previously, we would balance the fund with the general fund. What I've done here is only included the FTEs for the students that attend the Churchill High School. There is a fund balance currently in that community service fund, so you can see that we have a deficit, a structural deficit of $1 million in each of the two school years. I believe they will both be a little bit lower as I'm learning more things and we're gathering more information based on student count, programs that are running next year at the early childhood, things like that. They'll be a little bit less, but it's a structural deficit because there is a fund balance, so we are not running without dollars. We're just going to pay down that fund equity that we have in those funds. Are there any questions about the community service fund? Instead of taking, okay. The food service fund is only the food service activities that go on, and it's all considered federal money, whether they're cash food, it's the state dollars, because however the dollars go in, you can't separate them, so it's all considered under the federal free and reduce lunch program. We do have a planned deficit in both years. This is mostly due to excess fund balance. There was a great question asked at Finance Facilities about how much is the allowable fund balance, and that is about $800,000 for Royal Oak Schools. So we are, our planned spend is a little bit more than that, but as we know, we spend, we actually make more money as this reimbursement rate stays higher. We have free for all, we're getting the money from the state. So I have no worries that we're, we have our planned spend, and these things that we're buying are additional equipment for the food service program. Even tonight, on tonight's agenda, we have some cold wells for Royal Oak Middle School. We just purchased some ovens. This last year, we bought a new service line for Northwood Elementary. There's been many new kitchens, equipments over the last couple of years due to this excess fund balance. Are there any questions about the food service fund? Next is the student activity fund. When Gatsby 84 was initiated, this became one of the voted-on funds of the district. So these are all of the monies that come in and out on student activity funds. We have about 170 different clubs, groups, activities that are incorporated in the student activity fund. This is the money that comes in and out. It's everything from fourth grade field trips to the student council, to the basketball team. A lot of this is maybe money that comes in for, to pay for a field trip and goes out to pay for the field trip. We look, so we set the revenue expenditures based on the actual spend that goes through that account each year. Are there any questions about the student activity fund? And then the debt service fund is the two different issues that we have. We have currently, we've paid off or refunded the 2018, and now we have the 2025 debt and the 2020 debt. So we have two issues. I set the levies for the debt service fund with Nate Watson from PFM to make sure we're setting that correctly. This was a planned spend in the 24, 25 school year to pay down that fund balance. We legally can only hold so much of the community's dollars to pay for the debt. So that was a planned spend down of that, those dollars. And you can see that we'll, we'll collect a little bit more in 2025, 26. Any questions about the debt service fund? And then I'm here, I'm just highlighting again that for the 2020 debt fund, it's 1.12 mils, and the 2025 debt is 1.8 mils. So that board resolution is for a total of 2.2 mils. All right, so all our assumptions on the general fund so far. So at this point, we're planning a student enrollment flat of zero students. The change in the PA 152, which is the hard cap on our health insurance, it's increasing 2.7%, but it's only for half the year because our insurance changes in January. So for January through June, it's 1.45%. So that's an additional cost of about $101,000. The retirement rate went down, and you probably heard a lot about the 5.75% that it went down, but other portions of that ORS rate went up. So our effective change is down 1.45%, which is about $580,000. I have included collective bargaining agreements, steps only. Later on tonight's agenda, Mr. Wolinski has a couple of those for your approval. They are not included in tonight's budget because they have not been approved by the Board of Education yet. So this is the cost of steps only with FICA and ORS, so ROAS, about $86,000, ROEA, 1.2 million. ROESA, which is our secretary of impair group, 202,000. RASP, which is our psychologist, is 14,000. And the non-rep are those of us that don't fall into one of those union groups, about 41,000. Our retirements see us about $20,000. Our retirement, I have not included any retirements in tonight's presentation, but I do believe we have at least 10. So we'll have to include that in our next iteration. And the ability to adjust staffing to enrollment ratios is about $160,000 a teacher. So we have reduced through attrition and some other changing of programming, 10 FTEs, so that's a savings of about $1.6 million. And I just have here at the bottom, I just want to, so that we have it marked, that House Bill 6058 is still out there. That would be an additional 7% increase to PA 152. That is not included, so I just, it's just always on a reminder that that's still out there. We are currently negotiating with both Durham, which is our transportation, and ABM, which is maintenance, custodial, and grounds. So I don't have any changes to those contracts yet, but we hopefully have those also prepared for you by June 26th. Shield, which is formerly SAFEED, is about an $8,000 increase, but I believe there's a change on tonight's agenda with the SEC contract. Oakland Schools Technology goes up about 45,000, but also Dr. Uanis has a change. That one goes down a little bit. So that'll be a savings for the district. Our Affordable Care impact on our edge of staff employees is an unknown, but just something that we have to think about and we keep track of. And then we always start with a prior year structural deficit as our starting point. So last year, we began at $3.4 million of structural deficit. So all of the things I just named were actually a savings overall. So we begin this year at about $2.9 million structural deficit, without any other changes that we have not approved yet. So I'd like to tell you that the slide is current, but it's not because the House released their information just yesterday, and I have some of those for you. But also, later in tonight's presentation, Superintendent Fitzpatrick will also cover some of these items. So the governor's proposal was $392 per pupil increase, the House 417, that did stay the same in their new proposal, and 400 for the state. Our student, current student count is $4,836. 147A4, which was that 5.75% ORS, has been removed from all three budget proposals. 31A funding continues. Depending on which branch, it changes, whether it's 4.1, 4.2, or 4.6%, I believe. 20F does not, is not provided in any of the budgets. We knew this last year. Half was removed last year and the other half this year, and then 20F is completely gone. 30D was included in all three. The House has now removed universal free, universal breakfast and lunch programs from their proposal. Some of the other items in the House was kind of making a new categorical that was $1,976 per pupil, but removed many other things. The universal lunch or breakfast and lunch, it removed 31AA, it removed our added costs for VOC Ed. There's quite a long list. And I'm still going through of that. Like I said, it just came out yesterday, and I believe that Mrs. Fitzpatrick has some additional information on that. So based on the information we had, that means that this was an added cost to the district, so we received less dollars than we did in the current year of 500,000 under the governor's, 350 under the old House, and then 400,000 for the Senate. So this is where we're at today under the governor's proposal, about a structural deficit, about 3.5 million. And if you remember, that's where I said we started last year. So the things that are still outstanding are the state budget, which are, things are probably just gonna get started now at this point, contract negotiations for the ROEA, ROESA, ROESA, and RASP, our negotiations with Durham and ABM. So those are the items that are still outstanding. And as we approve other things tonight, those will also get added on, and I'll bring those to you on June 26th. Are there any questions?
You're saying that Superintendent Fitzpatrick has more information? Would you be able to share that with us?
Sure, I can share that with you now. So one of the other things that, thank you, Isabella, for that presentation, but one of the other things that was supposed to occur tonight, Representative Natalie Price reached out to us, and we've, in Royal Oak, we're continually reaching out to our legislators to talk with them about the importance of school funding, but there are many other topics beyond funding that they are also very helpful to us across the year. And so I appreciate that relationship. But I will say, one of the reasons why the slide isn't as updated as it can be is just the complexity of what came out in the Michigan House of Representatives' proposal yesterday. In a 56 to 53 vote that passed their budget yesterday, it provides for $40.8 million in per pupil payments that will go to private K-12 schools. So as a public school and a public entity, knowing that those dollars are going to be put forth now to private schools across the state of Michigan, according to what the House has proposed, is very concerning. It is unconstitutional and precedent-setting, and that's difficult for us on a very tight budget. We talked about our per pupil allotment, that is the main way that we receive funding in through the schools, the number of pupils that exist in each school district. As that shifts and changes, we have winners and losers in public education. As families move, as families have choice, our funding is only, you know, very dependent upon our pupil allotment. And when you find out that programs that we have that may potentially need to be cut because $40 million is being given to private schools is very concerning. In addition to that, another $170.6 million will be going in scholarships, according to their budget, to students that attend private universities. And according to the notes I have, this is the first time that Michigan would issue direct per pupil aid to private schools, again, setting a precedent. So as we sit here in June and try to project what our budget will look like for July the 1st, and you talk about protecting vital programs, we've made some very difficult decisions in our district this year. And we've heard from some citizens, we hear from parents, and we want to protect every single thing that impacts the classrooms and students. And we cannot do that without a budget. And so as we sit here, weeks away from the deadline, because by law, we have to produce a budget for this community, and yet we sit here and we don't have all of the information. There are many variables in this equation that are missing for us, which is unfair. It's unfair to the students, and it's unfair to the community. So again, we work very closely with our representatives in Lansing and those that represent us in the federal government. Some say, you know, schools are always asking for money. I would love anyone to run their budget in their business based on the information that they received four days before a deadline of having that budget due. And then potentially, as we had, happened to us this year, funding is removed after it's been given to us. So we had a deduct in this district that many schools across our area, the impact was greater, but for us, it was
But for us, it was still a de-dec. So they provide funding, they change the rules, and then they just withhold that amount of money from the next payment to us because they changed their mind. And that's very difficult. I don't know how you run programs. And we do, this board protects all of those programs, and our team protects as many things as we can. But to our legislators and to our families, I would say that this budget that was proposed is absolutely not supportive of public education. And so to Brett Price, we'll be reaching out to her tomorrow, and to all of our representatives working in Lansing on our behalf, we do appreciate them. So thank you, Ms. Isabella. Thank you for asking, Ms. Anderson.
Can I follow up? So what is the prognosis in the Senate and with the governor on what they proposed yesterday?
So that's all the, you know, that's kind of what gets worked out now, is just understanding where it lands. They each get to, you know, put their plans on the table for schools, and then eventually, they decide on a final budget and they issue it to us. There is really no deadline for them. They can continue to change it and change their minds and hash this out for months. We hope that it's coming by July 1 so that we can, you know, be more predictable in ours. I asked at a session with some local legislators a few weeks ago if they would consider a multi-year commitment to public schools so we aren't doing this every single year, and we could at least plan for two years in a row, as opposed to one year at a time with weeks to spare. So I don't think that's coming soon, but that maybe after I retire, we will see that happen in the state of Michigan. But again, I think that this speaks to the advocacy by our PTAs, by our board, by our parents and our staff, our strong unions in the state and the groups that represent our workers here. They need to reach out and express their concerns and ask the questions that we're all asking today.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you both.
So Ms. Isabella, on the agenda, the public hearing has been moved to item eight on our agenda.
I would do this very officially. It's public hearing, 2025, 2026 budget and military. A public hearing is designated time on this agenda for public to provide their input on this specific agenda item only. The rules for public comment do apply. And we'll gavel in the public comment. Any public comment on the budget presentation that we just received? Scene on, public hearing is closed. On to item nine, which is the student representative to the board. Lani, you're all by yourself.
I'll still talk for the both of us. No, I won't, actually. It's the end of the school year, so exams have been completed. And then there is summer school at Churchill, which is here. From June 16th to July 17th, there is AM and PM session. The, like, calendar for next year has not been approved yet, I don't think. Has been approved? Okay, has been approved. So then that will be online on our website. School starts next year, August 25th, and then there is a break around my birthday, luckily enough, for Labor Day, so I'll take that. Exactly, exactly. So grateful. And have a great summer, stay cool. And that's about it. That's all I have this time around.
What do you think, any questions? Tracy Jazinski.
Hey, Lani, you've been working with the city on Juneteenth planning? Yeah? Do you want to maybe tell us about that?
I would love to. I didn't know how much I could talk about. So I recently did a podcast with that, which will be shown at the Juneteenth event. It is in my calendar where the Juneteenth event is, but it's not on the top of my head right now. Great, because it was not there. Trying to think about it, was not there. Farmer's Market. I love going to the Farmer's Market. My mom got a really nice tomato there and ate the entire thing. Surprising, because she hates tomato, so I'll take it. I think it was amazing. So good job Farmer's Market, making my mom eat tomatoes. And so I did a podcast for that, and there will be a lot of events. There will be vendors. It will be, there's a walk, like a walk, and it'll be a fun event. I will probably be there. I might forget to call off, so we'll find out. I should probably call off work soon, though. But yeah, so that event will be happening, and there will be other videos. It's a three podcast thing that we did. And so there will be two other videos, and then the one that I'm on with three other people. There we go. Sorry, last day of school, I'm tired. I didn't even have exams, but don't, don't, don't question. It was up at 5:00 AM. So yeah, that'll be in the fun event, and yeah.
Any other comments or questions? Tracy Cook?
Where can people access these podcasts of which you speak?
They will be public soon, not just yet. They will be publicly, I'm pretty sure they become public on the day of it. They'll be on radio, on Xfinity. I'm pretty sure on YouTube and other areas, so you can watch that, see me mess up a little bit. But yeah, it'll be great. It was so much fun to do. It was an amazing opportunity, and I'm really grateful for it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Excellent. Brings us to item 9.2 tonight, which is a safety committee update.
Well, thank you. I'd ask the members of my team presenting tonight to come on up, join me here. So tonight, we'd like to do just a brief overview of our commitments to safety across our school district. It has become increasingly important that all of our staff, students, visitors, and every space in our building, our fields, et cetera, all are a part of our safety plan. And we have an amazing team that works all year long. And I hope through tonight's presentation, you get a glimpse into how serious we take student safety and wellness, and then also how supported our students are by the work. So with me tonight, Patrick Walensky, our Executive Director for Staff and Student Services, Lauren Jazinski from our board, Dina Banson, our Lead Psychologist, working here, Mr. Loomis, Ms. Meldrum, and Mr. Minor, representing our teachers' union. Also in the audience this evening, Jason Russell and Lieutenant Tyson from the Royal Police Department. And this just represents parts of the committees that we have here within the district. So as you know, we presented our continuing excellence. This is our long-range plan. It's our strategic plan for the district, and there are many important components here. But if our students are not supported, many of the goals that we set for them could not occur. And so we want to make sure that through the commitment that we have to Royal Oak Schools as an inclusive, diverse, safe, and student-first environment, together as a community, we help develop growth-minded students who can adapt in a dynamic world as they learn. If students are not feeling safe, secure, and supported in school, they will not learn. It inhibits their ability to learn, and so we need that to happen. So this graphic represents what safety planning looks like in Royal Oak Schools. At the center of our work are the students, staff, families, and visitors. Because as many of you know, we have a lot of events that occur within our district, and the safety doesn't end and start with bells in our school district. It actually occurs all of the time. It includes every school and every building. It includes every employee, it's their responsibility to ensure safety. And we do take it seriously and pay attention to it all year long. This is not something that we visit on occasion. It is embedded in all of our work. But in the graphics surrounding the most important folks here, our students, staff, families, and visitors, are all of the ways that safety plays a role in our district and is considered. Whether it's our forms, our protocols, the funding that we look at, the training and professional development. We have common terms. We have emergency operations plans, which are developed by the folks here in the audience tonight and supported by all of our staff. We have meaningful conversations. We consult as needed. We are not experts in this, and we need our professionals to do that with us. And so I will just say to SEC and to our Royal Oak Police Department, we absolutely appreciate you, all of your consultation and the expert advice that you provide for us here in the district. So thank you for that. Also, within this is feedback and review with each event. And I was reminded of this several times in training that I took, and I know my team has as well, that with every incident, with anything that happens unfortunate in the public, we learn from that and we adapt. Because what we thought five years ago, even a year ago, changes with every event. So safety is first and always in our planning. We have many major systems that support safety. First, we have an internal safety committee, and we talk about them even being called a committee because it's really a work group. And this is a very dynamic group of the cabinet administrators that you see and have talked with this evening, our school resource officer, Antonio Lipscomb, the technology staff. Technology plays a huge role in our safety planning and response. Our maintenance and operations teams that we have within the district, and our district communications, Amy Murphy, plays a key role. We also started this year a district safety advisory committee, and that has fellow administrators on it, our safety consultants from SEC, our ROPD representation, our school board, and our teacher union president. And this is really a high-level advisory committee that really talks about big ideas that we bring them or provides guidance to us on decisions that we are making. And then the most important spoke, I think, in all of this is the building level. We need to have consistent training, drills, use of the district protocols. We problem-solve there. We support our systems for our students. And again, the communication and educating our students. You're going to hear a little bit more about each of these initiatives this evening. So I'd like to introduce Mr. Walensky, who will take us through the safety work group that's here.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Fitzpatrick. I want to start by saying I will not be presenting our district EOP, which is 68 pages long. We do have a very comprehensive emergency operation plan. I will be talking about, we will be talking about our planning. It is a huge collective effort, and I'm going to say this, to keep our kids safe. And it is by far the most, the single most important thing we are tasked with. We have to have every effort in place that we can to keep our kids safe every day. And I said to Ms. Fitzpatrick recently, I said, I feel like we're finally getting this organized. Like, not finally, but we're at a better place than I feel like we've ever been this school year. I said that, and I feel that. I've been working on school safety here in Royal Oak for 25 years, and I feel like we're coming to a good place. I think this started, when we really started to get organized, in November of 2018, when we applied for that big Michigan State Police grant, and we received, Ms. Isabella, $537,000 for school safety upgrades. And we did a lot of things. We have a lot of good things in place, like cameras and locking. Our doors lock. They lock behind you. You have to have cards to get in the building. We have an Epic system. So we put a lot of money into place. That grant was really easy. Jason, I think you remember, it was really easy to fill out. What wasn't easy was to be eligible. You had to attach and prove that your EOP was in line with the Michigan State Police EOP and all of the components of it. Well, like a lot of districts, ours wasn't quite up to that level or had all those components. So we put a lot of work into making sure it was. And it's not a one-and-done. It's constantly evolving. You're constantly updating your plan. And I feel like we've been doing that, and it's in a really good place now. Another thing that happened that moved us in the right direction, I got to give Officer Yurki credit. I'm pointing at you, I know you're not Officer Yurki. He's a colleague. He's a police officer like you. Joe was a really great liaison officer. And he and I would look at our plans, and he's like, what's the evac? He was very interested in this, and very good at this. He said, what's your evacuation route? What's the reunification area? And he called every location and said, do you know that you're the reunification area for Keller Elementary? So he and I would talk about this a lot, and he said, I was going to imitate him, we should have a committee. If you know Joe, that's how he talks. He said, we should have a committee that just talks about school safety, a small committee. And I said, I agree. He said, we have committees for everything else, just a handful of people. That's all we talk about. We get together, whatever it is, monthly. So I said to Ms. Fitzpatrick, we need to have a school safety committee. She said, absolutely. So I put out an invitation to our school principals. I said, we're putting together a school safety committee. Would you like to be on it? And I'm proud to say, every single principal immediately said, yes, I want to be on that committee. I wasn't planning on all of you being on it. I wanted it to be a small committee. But then I thought, I always say, school safety is the most important thing we do. It's the most important task of a building principal. So I thought, yeah, we got to do this. We got to get all of our principals together. We're together monthly anyway for administrative council. So we stopped calling it a committee, and we just said, one hour before ed council that we do monthly, we're going to meet with our principals, and we're going to talk about school safety. And we've been doing that ever since. That was three years ago. We're in our third year of that now. So every building principal, our three executive directors, Dr. Yuanis, Ms. Isabella, and myself. Our Director of Maintenance and Operations is a critical person to be on this committee. Our Police Liaison Officer, Antonio Lipscomb. Our Director of Technology, believe it or not, is a critical person in all of our planning. Technology is a huge part of it. Our Communications Specialist is a huge part of it. Communication during these incidents is critical. So Amy Murphy is on it. And Dina Banson, our Lead Psychologist, is on this committee. And then... Oh, did you? Thank you. So we meet monthly, but we don't, I said, we got to stop calling this committee. We really, and I think, Jason, you used the word tactical. What we focus on in that committee is really kind of day-to-day things that go on in a building. And then topics and questions arise. So in the course of our meeting, we said to our principals, you got to have monthly conversations with your staff. It can't just be us. So the building principals, the first, late start of every month, they devote time to talking about just school safety. So the first few meetings of the year, I said, talk about your evacuation routes. Talk about your reunification area, because I guarantee your staff don't know that by heart. Some do, but not all of them. Go over parts of your plan. And then from there, I stopped telling them what to talk about. I said, open the floor to school safety. Let this be organic, and it worked. And staff would be like, raise their hand with a question. I'm on the second floor. Can I break my window and have a ladder to climb out? Whatever the question is, they then bring back to our committee, which if, whatever we talk about. And then we have the district committee that we talk about. So it's kind of a triangular thing. And it's just kind of evolved that way, hence why I thought, I think we're finally getting this really organized the way it should be. And then, what's it? There we go. So this was really big. Something that came out of this committee this year is you have a plan. We have a 68-page emergency operation plan that I'm not presenting tonight. And then, per Jason's advice, we took the things. So those are our common protocols, district-wide. But each building has a different evacuation route, a different reunification area, a different staff roster. So we took their smaller component of that, and we have binders. And Ms. Isabella helped us assemble the, we call them red bags. Every room has a red bag with the binder and with some other things, some emergency medical things in it. And we meet monthly, and... So what, okay, I lost my place there for a second. The EOP, one of the things we said was, where do we keep this? We don't want to just have paper documents. It's got to be a living document that's updated all the time. So this year, we now have electronic storage that only certain people have access to for the district EOP. We have electronic storage of the smaller EOPs, the building-specific ones. And then a big part of the, of school safety, as I think you know, is identifying kids who might be of threat, either to themselves or others. And a big part of our keeping kids safe is identifying those children. And it's not to remove them from school necessarily, it's to prevent them from continuing on this path of potential harm. So as you can imagine, that's highly confidential. When a student does something that's really upsetting or really threatening, we do a threat assessment. Well, I'm going to let Dina Banson talk about this because she does it better than I do. But that has to be stored very confidentially and maintained somewhere as well. We've got all of this organized, finally. Where we store our EOP, who has access, keeping it updated, our building-specific EOPs, all of our threat assessments, and the use of technology to maintain all of this. Dina, are you prepared to talk about threat assessments? Okay.
Hello. So our district actually has a very well-defined threat assessment process, and we have for many years. Like Pat said, we've worked really closely with the IT department this school year to focus on the safe storage of the completed threat assessment documents. And so our completed and finalized threat assessment documents are no longer stored on our Google Drive. They're shared on an Oakland Schools Network S drive. So the permissions and the access are monitored by Royal Oak Schools and Oakland Schools. And so we have about 65 staff members that represent every building in our district and multiple disciplines who participated in BTAM training. And BTAM stands for Behavioral Threat Assessment and Management. And that's the training that's recommended by the Michigan State Police and the Office of School Safety. And then all of our administrators have also received a refresher presentation of kind of the important key points to always remember with the BTAM process earlier in the school year. So each of our schools has a threat assessment team. So each of our schools has a threat assessment team, and it consists of an administrator and a school-based mental health professional. So that can be a school counselor, school social worker, school psychologist. And then there are some additional building level, district level, and our SRO have also been trained in BTAM. And each building has a minimum of three staff members trained, and our secondary buildings have more staff trained. So you might be wondering, what is a threat assessment? Well, a threat assessment is a systematic process that's designed to, one, identify persons of concern, two, gather information and investigate a reported threat, three, assess the person and the situation, and then four, to manage the person and the situation. So it's really a safety assessment. We're working to ensure the safety of the student of concern, of all the students, and of all the people that are in the learning environment. So the BTAM process is not intended to be disciplinary, but although a student may face disciplinary action if they violated the student code of conduct, but it is a separate process in the threat assessment process. So what happens, or so the goal of a threat assessment is to mitigate the risk for violence. We really want to be able to identify a student of concern and put interventions and supports in place so that the person of concern is not on a pathway to violence. We use the information that we gather to determine if a person made a threat or a person poses a threat to, of violence to themselves or to others. So typically, what happens in the process is an administrator would receive a report of a threat from a staff member. And as soon as a potential threat is reported, then the screening process begins by gathering the school-based threat assessment team. And then the team considers that information, answering screening questions to determine if there's a need to complete a full threat assessment. And then in those cases where a full threat assessment is needed, the team begins working to gather information from multiple sources. We need to have multiple sources of information. So we're looking at interviewing the student of concern, interviewing parents, interviewing staff. Sometimes it's interviewing coaches, it's interviewing anyone that can provide us with more information regarding the student or the situation. Then we're organizing and analyzing that information. Then we're using all of that information to answer specific questions, to make our assessment, and then to develop and implement an intervention or monitoring plan for the student moving forward. So we're using that process to determine the appropriate actions that are needed to mitigate the threat and to ensure the safety of the school community. So some of the factors that we're looking at when we're going through gathering, organizing, and analyzing information include the capacity. What's the physical and cognitive capacity of that student to carry out the threat? What are the means, are there access to weapons or other potentially dangerous items? And what is the intent? Is there motivation, a desire to carry out the threat? Does the student have an ongoing or unresolved grievances? So those are some of the factors that we're looking at. And so the teams are working together and working through the threat assessment process to just help to put the student of concern on a more positive pathway and to hopefully mitigate the potential of violence. So we're really trying to move them from a pathway to a pathway of hope instead of a pathway to violence. So that's kind of a threat assessment in a nutshell. You're welcome.
Okay, this last thing I'm going to talk about is a new training that most of our administrators have now attended. It's an interesting name, and I'll explain that. It was, I'm not one that loves to sit through training. I signed up for what was an eight-hour training, I can tell you. It was by far the best training I've ever been to. And it really, it's a way to standardize all these efforts we put in place so that we're using common language. And all of the, the language and the protocols will be consistent across the state. We're being trained, we're going to be early adopters of it in the fall, transitioning to this new language, as will law enforcement. So we're all on the same page. And I found that schools use different terms for different things. Like, we might say evacuation, and in Madison Heights, they might say code red. Well, Royal Oak might be assisting Madison Heights and not know what a code red is. So there's current, common terminology, we're all going to be on the same page, we're all going to use the same protocols. It's called the standard response protocol. And I love when things make sense, and this training absolutely made sense. The I Love You Guys Foundation, it's heartbreaking, the why it's called that. The mother and father lost their daughter in an active school shooter incident. She was able to text them that she was being held at gunpoint, and that was the last text she sent to her parents. You know, you, you don't recover from that, so how do you go on? Instead of, instead of like focusing their, their love and their hate and retribution or lawsuits, they started this foundation, and that's, that's what they call it, because they said there's a ton of research out there, law enforcement knows it. Let's all get on the same page about how best to keep our kids safe, hence I Love You Guys training. Jason, do you want to talk a little bit about more of that, if you don't mind? Jason Russell is another reason we're getting our stuff together around school safety. I'll let him introduce himself, you can come up here if you want.
Sure.
He has done two school safety audits for us during the school day, after the school day, given us feedback about both of those. He's done tabletop exercises. We now contract with Secure Education Consultants for our hallway and ground supervision. We're one of 30 districts that contract with his organization. He also, I think you said today, about 75 to 80% of them you do consulting for, which he does for us as well. But I'll let you talk if you wouldn't mind about the training.
Yeah, so, you know, the standard response protocols, the, the new plan, there's some legislation in the state of Michigan. The, the School Safety and Mental Health Commission, of which I'm on, established this to essentially create a standardization across the state. As was mentioned, everybody was using different words. One place would call it a, you know, soft lockdown, next place would call it a secure, next place would call it a lockout. So this, there's a legislation passed, House Bill 4095 and 4096, mandated that schools adopt the standard response protocols. You have until September of 2026 to actually have these in place. But Royal Oak has done a really good job of always being kind of on the front edge of getting these things done. So our, our support of the district has really been in terms of doing the, the safety and security assessments. As was mentioned, we work with about 80% of the public schools in the state of Michigan through our consulting business. And I think you're going to hear in a little bit, our SEC Shield Program is the physical bodies that reside within your schools. And we work with a little over 30 districts in that program. So we also have done tabletop training with the districts. So we, we've worked with the district on really taking those plans. The plans are great, the books are fantastic, but they're not, they have to be operationally effective, not just technically, you know, compliant. So the way to be operationally effective is to not just keep the book and say, let's hope that the book jumps off the shelf and does something in an emergency. It's to actually practice. So we've done, when this is really, really very rare, we've done two rounds of tabletop exercises in Royal Oak. And I can tell you, it's the only district in Michigan that I've done two rounds of tabletop exercises within the same year. So I think the, the work that has been done, you know, from all levels within Royal Oak has been really impressive, and I'm very proud to be a part of, of the efforts that have taken place. And kudos to Superintendent Fitzpatrick for all the work that she's done. She's truly been a great leader in terms of making sure that this is such a priority in the district. So can, look forward to continuing to work with the district going forward.
So the second group that began to meet this year, and we meet quarterly, that started last August, was comprised of district administration, our teacher representation support staff, and then a representative from SEC, from ROPD, and our building administrators. And it's really a smaller group that is intended to be advisory in nature. So all of the things that are talked about, there's a few that bubble to the top, and we need more input on from a, an expert point of view, a user, a community member point of view, or a teacher point of view that makes its way to that committee. We present a lot of the work that's going on in the district and take good questions from our committee members to make sure that our decision-making is in line with the philosophy and the mission of the district as well. So our topics that we've covered this year include things about technology, so understanding how it works and the uses, our emergency responses and the tools that we've purchased and needed. You know, it's one thing to keep asking for money, but for this purpose and understanding why it's important and what it's used for, we, we definitely want our stakeholders to understand that. We present our updates to those EOPs, and we always seek grant funding opportunities. One thing that I've consistently talked about as a superintendent with our legislators and our, my peers across the county is that we should not compete for safety funds. Grant, grants for safety should not be competitive. It should be afforded to every school and, that supports the children in Michigan. We have conducted the safety audits that you heard about in this last spring. We finished our large group spaces audit, because we want to be sure that if they're out of play, a swim meet, a track meet, whatever's happening, they're as safe as they are, and our responses are as comprehensive as they are when they're in school. And then, as you heard from Dina Banson, we talk a lot about how our plans tie to wellness. So drills are, are important, but drills can be very upsetting to the adults and the students. And so what can we consider during these safety drills to fully understand it? We often go to acts of violence in schools, and that's why we drill. But we had an application of our plan a few years ago with a gas leak in the community near Keller. That was an evacuation process that was a collaboration between our district and another that supplied buses, and our Metro Detroit youth group that helped us with keeping our students safe during the day till parents could pick them up, so, the youth club. So to me, it is a community effort, and we're very thankful for, for those partnerships. We also know that the Royal Oak Police protect our entire community, but if there's something that happens in the community not involving schools, they let us know. And we know that then, there was a response to something in the area that I believe involved both Upton and Adams a few years ago. And we needed to be ready with our plans because they were doing their work out in the community. We talk about the professional development and the training and all the updates that we have. Dina told me a fact today that, she spoke with a colleague in another district that they have very few people trained in their protocols, and yet we have close to 70 staffers trained here in Royal Oak. So I appreciate our staff's willingness to always receive training. Our board does a great job of reviewing our policies to make sure they align with our practices. We revised our guidelines and policies this year to match the protocols that we have and the language that we use. And we are always, as a committee, taking ideas for future needs. So what's new for us for next year? Not for me, but I will definitely leave these notes. We want to involve parents in our work, we want to make sure our parents understand our plans. They entrust us with their children every day, and we want to find ways to involve our parents in the, through presentations, committees, discussions, on how they can play a vital role in the safety of their children while they're here. We want to share our safety protocols and provide regular updates to our community. And we have to establish clear guidelines for professional development. We have a lot of staff that are hired and leave our district throughout the school year. And then every year, we have brand-new staff. And how can we ensure that each group, as they come in and out, are, are well-trained with the PD? For all of us, we want to find ways to involve our students as well. They play a significant role, everyone is a stakeholder in safety planning. And so we want to involve our students at an age-appropriate level in that safety plan. We want to absolutely keep current with key resources that are coming, either legislatively or via the Michigan State Police, provide a lot of information to us. This summer, those of you that'll be here, will be tasked with keeping our EOPs up to date, and then we'll create a presentation back to the board in the fall with the key changes from that work group. So just very proud to be a part of, you know, this endeavor. As he says, Mr. Wilensky says, it's one of the most important things that we do. And, you know, I think about my own children now as adults and when they were in school, and just really understanding the adults and, and, you know, what they do to keep our children safe every day. So I'm very proud of our district and our staff. So with that, I'll take any questions or members of the panel can take from the board.
Trustee Alexander.
I suspect that this question's going to be for Ms. Banson, but anybody can answer. So in my day job, I work in mental health, and we have, specifically, we have a program that serves children with severe emotional disturbances, and a lot of those children are shared students in districts all across Oakland County. And I'm wondering, during the threat assessment process, how often there is coordination with those providers that may have additional information that can be helpful, and just curious your thoughts on that.
Yeah, absolutely, I think that's really important, and that's actually one of the, when we want to gather information from multiple sources, if students are working with outside agencies or with outside therapists, it's really important for us to connect with them too. And a lot of time, that's going to then be a part of our case management plan afterwards. So definitely, thank you for bringing that up.
Anybody else? Here it is, thank you.
Thank you.
Before we move to item 9.3, I'd like to entertain a motion for a five-minute recess. Looks like a motion by trustee Jazinski, is there a second? Taken by trustee Alexander. On favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, we'll be back in five minutes.
Hi, how are you?
[inaudible]
Ashley, you're 1:50. As I look at it real quick, I thought it said 15 minutes. Something like, that's the short version.
Kept it short and sweet, but I could do 15 minutes for Mary Beth, for sure.
Anyone have any questions or comments for Ms. Phillips?
Ms. Van Heijtma.
So Ashley, thank you again for your continued work. And just every time you present something to us, I know there's a lot that you're doing for our students and for our community. So, and I know I see you everywhere, too. So I truly appreciate you being everywhere. And then for the Juneteenth, you said they still need additional volunteers to?
Just a few more.
Okay. Well, thank you, and we look forward to whatever comes next year, because I know it'll just be bigger and better, as always. Thank you.
Any other comments? No, excellent. Thank you. Brings to item 10 on our agenda this evening, which is communications. And they will ask Secretary Anderson.
We've had a few since our last meeting. Vanessa Quillman, Robert Coffey, Cheryl Edberg, Jennifer Teetz, Andrea Lipton, and Christina Donigan.
Thank you. Item 11 this evening is the consent agenda. The consent agenda generally consists of routine matters as well as items we've covered during this meeting or another board or committee meeting. All items are documented in the minutes, which are published following the meeting at which they were approved. All of our committee and board meetings are open to the public, and public comment is an agenda item on each agenda. We invite members of the public to join our committees. Tonight's consent agenda consists of 11.1, payment of expenses, and 11.2, field trips, Royal Oak High School. Are there any additions or dilutions to the consent agenda this evening? See, now the consent agenda is passed as presented. Item 12.1 this evening is the superintendent's report.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you all for the nice tributes. You know, thank you, Ashley. It has been wonderful working with you in Royal Oak, and our paths did cross in another neighboring district on the other side of Woodward. And I'm just so happy that we hired you and brought you into our lives here in Royal Oak. So thank you for all of your work as well. First item is that I'll draw your attention to this evening, item 12.1.1. It's the first reading of revised, replaced, and/or recommended policies and guidelines. And just as a reminder, that our partner in looking at board policies is the Niola Group. We work with them very closely about things that we must change according to the law. And then we also look at policies in our district that we want to update and ensure that they follow our practice and the guidance here from the Board of Education. The board committee meets, and they bring for first readings a set of those policies to you this evening.
Do we have a motion for 12.1.1? Trustee Cock.
Resolved that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education approves a first reading of the policies and administrative guidelines being revised, replaced, and/or recommended as presented in the board packet.
Do we have a second? Trustee Anderson. Is there any discussion on the motion before us? Trustee Anderson.
I just want to say thank you to the policy committee. This is a lot of work, a lot of detail work, and I know we all really appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other discussion? See, now a call for a vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? A motion is carried.
Item 12.1.2 is our annual membership to the MHSAA. We are well-supported by them, by their guidance, their training for coaches, support for our athletic directors, and we really do appreciate that affiliation and support of athletics here in Oakland County and specifically in Royal Oak. So I am presenting to you a recommendation this evening to continue our membership with MHSAA.
Thank you. We have a motion for 12.1.2. Trustee Wiki.
Be it resolved that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education hereby delegates to the superintendent or his or her designees the responsibility for the supervision and control of said activities, and hereby accepts the constitution and bylaws of said association and adopts as its own the rules, regulations, and interpretations as minimum standards, as published in the current handbook, as the governing code under which the said schools shall conduct its program of interscholastic athletics and agrees to primary enforcement of the said schools' said rules, regulations, interpretations, and qualifications. In addition, it is hereby agreed that the schools which host or participate in the association's meets and tournaments shall follow and enforce all tournament policies, procedures, and schedules. This authorization shall be effective from August 1st, 2025, and shall remain effective until July 31st, 2026, during which the authorization may not be revoked.
Do we have a second? Trustee Van Heijtma. Is there any discussion on the motion before us? See, now a call for a vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? A motion is passed. Thank you. Item 12.2 this evening is curriculum and instruction. And they will ask for Dr. Yuanus's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chahorsky. I want to talk about a couple of things. I'll start off by talking about our kindergarten enrollment for the 25-26 school year. Currently, we have 407 students in kindergarten and developmental kindergarten that are registered to begin here in Royal Oak Schools. And the reason why I'm bringing that up tonight is I wanted to highlight, again, another way that we, as a school district, welcome our youngest learners and earliest learners and families into Royal Oak and begin to help them assimilate to some of the things that we do. So we have three key events that take place each year for all these incoming families and students. First one is our kindergarten screening event that takes place in all of our elementary buildings the last two weeks of May, and that opportunity has passed and taken place in all of our buildings. And the purpose of those opportunities is for our incoming kindergarten students to have time with our teaching staff at all of our elementary buildings. At that same time as they're coming in, we're
Upon that downline, we still need just a couple more hands on deck. So we are calling out for all volunteers. The number to reach the text is on our flyer as well. And you can also check our website. So as we wrapped up the school year, a lot throughout May and June, I attended a lot of different graduations, promotion ceremonies, wrapping up ceremonies, moving up ceremonies as well. So I want to congratulate all of our graduates and anyone who was moving up or promoted this year. We had lots of fun doing those different events, but I want them to know that for sure the sky is the limit. There is one graduate that we wanted to recognize for sure. We were able to recognize her during our ROS Jedi meeting and celebration. I was able to quickly say a few things, but I wanted to make sure we give you a proper tribute. And Mrs. Fitzpatrick, we definitely enjoy your service and what you have done for Royal Oak Schools and all of it you have done in the name of DEI as well. So just a quick shout out to you.
Mary Beth, thank you for all of your support for our diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging efforts and initiatives over the years. I am proud to say that this was not a new and recent commitment of yours that just started during your years in Royal Oak. As I've told you before, although we had just missed the opportunity to work with each other in our past district, your name and impact was still proudly reiterated in regards to the powerful changes you made there. I was told that you always operate with lots of care and consideration. Personally, this was made evident to me as well from small things like just double checking in and checking with me to make sure you spelled my daughter's name correctly in a thank you message to even larger items like program implementation and decision making. With special regards to diversity, equity, inclusion, you not only invested in learning more and researching more, but you also showed up. That means everything. I often tell you and Dr. Yuranis that you both need clones because even if you were double or triple booked for events, presentations, or meetings that day, you still showed up with sleeves rolled up and ready to hop in to assist in any way possible. Thank you. Although we were only able to work together for a short period of time, I appreciate you being our fearless leader who helped to continue to drive this work forward, even when in the face of opposing views and beliefs. Thank you for continuing to show up and thank you for keeping our Royal Oak Schools' culture and climate just as cool as your temperament has always been. On behalf of Royal Oak Schools and our community, our School Jedi and DEI teams, and our Royal Oak Schools Justice, Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Council, thank you for your service and commitment. Job well done.
Can we clap it up for Mrs. Mary Beth Fitzpatrick? Thank you. That's all our updates for tonight. And I believe as I've thought about it, you know, coming towards this, this will be our last meeting together, Mary Beth, so I wanted to make sure that you were honored there. So thank you again.
Actually, you're 1:50. As I look at it real quick, I thought it said 15 minutes. Something like, that's the short version.
Kept it short and sweet, but I could do 15 minutes for Mary Beth for sure.
And would you have any questions or comments for Ms. Phillips? Ms. Van Heijtma.
So Ashley, thank you again for your continued work. And just every time you present something to us, I know there's a lot that you're doing for our students and for our community. So, and I know I see you everywhere too. So I truly appreciate you being everywhere. And then for the Juneteenth, you said they still need additional volunteers to...
Just a few more.
Okay. Well, thank you. We look forward to whatever comes next year because I know it'll just be bigger and better as always. Thank you.
Any other comments? No, excellent. Thank you. Brings to item 10 on our agenda this evening, which is communications. And they will ask Secretary Anderson.
We've had a few since our last meeting. Vanessa Quillman, Robert Coffey, Cheryl Edberg, Jennifer Teetz, Andrea Lipton, and Christina Donigan.
Great. Thank you. 11 this evening is the consent agenda. The consent agenda generally consists of routine matters as well as items we've covered during this meeting or another board or committee meeting. All items are documented in the minutes, which are published following the meeting at which they were approved. All of our committee and board meetings are open to the public and public comment is an agenda item on each agenda. We invite members of the public to join our committees. Tonight's consent agenda consists of 11.1, payment expenses, and 11.2, field trips, Royal Oak High School. Are there any additions or dilutions to the consent agenda this evening? Seeing on the consent agenda is passed as presented. Item 12.1 this evening is the superintendent's report.
Well, thank you very much. Thank you all for the nice tributes. You know, thank you, Ashley. It has been wonderful working with you in Royal Oak and our paths did cross in another neighboring district on the other side of Woodward. And I'm just so happy that we hired you and brought you into our lives here in Royal Oak. So thank you for all of your work as well. First item is that I'll draw your attention to this evening, item 12.1.1. It's the first reading of revised, replaced, and/or recommended policies and guidelines. And just as a reminder that our partner in looking at board policies is the Niola Group. We work with them very closely about things that we must change according to the law. And then we also look at policies in our district that we want to update and ensure that they follow our practice and the guidance here from the Board of Education. The board committee meets and they bring for first readings a set of those policies to you this evening.
Do we have a motion for 12.1.1? Trustee Cook.
Resolved that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education approves a first reading of the policies and administrative guidelines being revised, replaced, and/or recommended as presented in the board packet.
Do we have a second? Trustee Anderson. Is there any discussion on the motion before us? Trustee Anderson.
I just want to say thank you to the policy committee. This is a lot of work, a lot of detail work, and I know we all really appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing on a call for a vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion is carried.
Item 12.1.2 is our annual membership to the MHSAA. We are well supported by them, by their guidance, their training for coaches, support for our athletic directors. And we really do appreciate that affiliation and support of athletics here in Oakland County and specifically in Royal Oak. So I am presenting to you a recommendation this evening to continue our membership with MHSAA.
Thank you. We have a motion for 12.1.2. Trustee Wiki.
Be it resolved that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education hereby delegates to the superintendent or his or her designees the responsibility for the supervision and control of said activities and hereby accepts the constitution and bylaws of said association and adopts as its own the rules, regulations, and interpretations as minimum standards as published in the current handbook as the governing code under which the school, said schools shall conduct its program of interscholastic athletics and agrees to primary enforcement of the said schools, said rules, regulations, interpretations, and qualifications. In addition, it is hereby agreed that the schools which host or participate in the association's meets and tournaments shall follow and enforce all tournament policies, procedures, and schedules. This authorization shall be effective from August 1, 2025, and shall remain effective until July 31, 2026, during which the authorization may not be revoked.
Do we have a second? Trustee Van Heijtma. Any discussion on the motion before us? Seeing on a call for a vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion is passed. Thank you. Item 12.2 this evening is curriculum and instruction. And they will ask for Dr. Yuranis's presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chorworski. I want to talk about a couple of things. I'll start off by talking about our kindergarten enrollment for the 25-26 school year. Currently, we have 407 students in kindergarten and developmental kindergarten that are registered to begin here in Royal Oak Schools. And the reason why I'm bringing that up tonight is I wanted to highlight, again, another way that we as a school district welcome our youngest learners and earliest learners and families into Royal Oak and begin to help them assimilate to some of the things that we do. So we have three key events that take place each year for all these incoming families and students. First one is our kindergarten screening event that takes place in all of our elementary buildings the last two weeks of May. And that opportunity has passed and taken place in all of our buildings. And the purpose of those opportunities is for our incoming kindergarten students to have time with our teaching staff at all of our elementary buildings. At that same time as they're coming in, we're having them work in small groups and take some very small, quick assessments with our teachers and ancillary staff at each of those buildings. Again, the purpose of those assessments is just to get our eyes on the students and begin to get an understanding of how they learn and how they interact with each other. And that in turn, as you can imagine, helps with the planning for the upcoming school year. So thank you to all of our teachers and staff members at all six of our elementary buildings that coordinated that for our incoming families. Parents were also able to stay. And then our principals had time with those incoming families to talk about some things that happened in our building. So again, that's the first initial opportunity. In June, all six of our elementary buildings had a spring event either through their PTA or some other programming at their building. And those 25-26 incoming families were invited to all six of those events as well. Unique events at each building level to again, begin to strengthen that school and home connection. And then the third event takes place in the fall. Well, we call it our teacher meet and student and teacher meet and greet event that'll take place at all six of the elementaries. More information to come from your building principals regarding when that will take place. And then we'll have a curriculum night component again. So if you think about that, we work hard in this district thanks to our teachers, staff, and administrators to provide three meaningful touch point contact with our incoming kindergarten families. And if seen at firsthand at the elementary level when those families come in, they feel confident. It's not the first time they've been to the school and maybe the second or third time. And they begin to see those teachers and engage with those principals. So we're excited about that. I also wanted to take a little bit of time here to talk about another exciting announcement. Many exciting announcements tonight, but this one is also important to talk about a new addition to our elementary programming. This new addition is going to be a library media teacher that's going to take place for the 25-26 school year. And I wanted to share some thoughts and ideas that we've had for this position. For these library media teacher positions, they're going to strategically integrate library and technology resources in all of our K-5 classrooms. And beyond the traditional function that they would have as a library person, they're going to also facilitate and engage learning opportunities at multiple levels that are really going to develop some crucial 21st century skills for our students. So we're really excited about that. I also wanted to take a little bit of time to highlight, we have identified about four or five very important skills and areas of focus that will be what we're going to work with our library and media teachers. Information, technology, digital, and media literacy is going to be a component in one of those five key areas. And we're going to have students critically access, evaluate, and create information across various formats. Career readiness is another component that's going to be integrated in that library media position. We're going to have some introduktional foundational concepts and skills regarding future career paths for students. We currently have career readiness, education, funding from the county level and some requirements this year that have come down to our elementary level students where teachers had to facilitate some learning for elementary students K through 5 regarding future career pathways. Currently, our classroom teachers kind of facilitated that. So we're going to fold that into this library media position as well. Another very important critical 21st century skill is research skill development. And we're going to help guide students through inquiry, investigation, and knowledge creation, really to support their grade level curriculum. Digital citizenship. We've talked about this before. We know that helping students understand how to responsibly engage with technology and the devices. So we're going to make sure that we have ways to incorporate digital citizenship understanding for our students beginning at the kindergarten level. And then last but not least, some inquiry based learning opportunities. And we definitely have plans for some hands on experience for our students with STEM, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. And we're also going to grow that into some project based learning opportunities. So we have a lot of our focus in these five areas, really to help elevate our students in that. So we're excited about all these opportunities that are coming up. I also wanted to spend a little bit of time just talking about some of the reasons for the change. And I want to thank all the families that reached out to us and reached out to me directly to just get more information regarding the change and the purpose. And I thank all of those families that were willing to meet with me in person or willing to have a conversation with me over the phone. A lot of the concern from families were that it was a budget decision or that it was a federally mandated cut. And most of the families, when we went through that and I shared with them, it wasn't a really, it's not a budgetary decision that we're not cutting a program to save money because the four Spanish teachers we have are going to be replaced with four library media teachers. So they were kind of relieved that it wasn't a cost saving thing and definitely not any mandates by the federal government at all. We looked at our Spanish instruction and we looked at our long term student selection at the secondary level. And we didn't see a direct correlation for students that were engaging in Spanish instruction from kindergarten to fifth grade. We didn't see high numbers of students being interested in engaging further into that Spanish language once they hit the middle school. Of course, they have opportunities in sixth grade to explore all three of those languages, French, German, I'm sorry, and Spanish. And then as they progress beyond sixth grade, we didn't see such a staggering high number of students experiencing Spanish for five or six years and then kind of continuing on that way. So we thought this would be a great opportunity to leverage these five areas that I talked about just to kind of increase those 21st century learning skills. That was really the reason why we had, the main reason that we had the change. We do have interviews set up coming up, June 18. We have a team that's going to work through, a team of administrators and teachers that are going to work through, it was an internal posting because we had very many teachers that are currently teaching with us that feel strongly about this opportunity. So we're going to go through that process. The other questions that came up, a lot of times from families or parents that reached out to me, really focused on what was the plan that we had. And we know that as good educators, we need to make sure we have hired the right teachers and put them in place. And they're going to help create the curriculum and the unit planning and the lessons are going to go around these five areas. We did not want to move forward and create all of that before we hired the teachers. We thought it was important to bring them on because they have great ideas. We have the foundational plan as far as the areas and the topics. But we know we're going to leverage that as well. We also had opportunities to get feedback from all of our classroom teachers at the elementary level. We really wanted to get some qualitative feedback from those elementary teachers. We had about four or five questions where we were trying to pull out how they felt this person could best support them in their instruction. So we got a lot of good feedback from our classroom teachers. And once we move through the interview process and identify the four teachers that will take this position, we'll bring in the feedback that we got from that, that the qualitative surveys from our elementary teachers and we'll work with them with our department to begin to officially develop that curriculum. And Superintendent Fitzpatrick and I have talked about, and I know that Dr. Tofelsky and I will continue to have that conversation in the fall about a further communication to our community and families because we do believe that we owe them some more clarification and communication in the fall. And I'm excited about that opportunity because by then we'll be able to release more of this information that focuses on those five areas that are really going to improve the 21st century skills for our students. And again, I'm sorry, I know I talk a lot, but one more thing I want to talk about because we did have a lot of families at Keller reach out to me also concerned about our PYP program, our IB program at Keller. There is a component, a language component that has to take place for us to continue to have that certification through our PYP program. And Mrs. Dryden and I have met a few times and we have some draft plan ideas of what might happen. We do have a PYP coordinator at Keller. And I think that we're going to think about how that person can incorporate some component of language and culture learning for all of the classrooms there at Keller so that they can still continue to sustain that certification level on the PYP program. It won't be, and when I've talked with families and met with them about this, I've made sure to let them know it's not going to be a direct instruction type of opportunity. It's just language and culture exposure. So again, that's very draft based for next year. And then we have some internal hopes that after one year of seeing that through at Keller, if it's working in that right direction, we can fold that into the other five buildings as part of what we expect the library media tech person to do. And Superintendent Fitzpatrick, Ms. Abella, and Mr. Walensky at cabinet discussed keeping our media tech paraproses. That's our current, that's how our current students currently engage with the library, media tech paraprofessional, not a certified teacher where they can go in and just check out books. So that person is going to be kept to support the teacher. And I think that's a great idea that our cabinet had to continue to support the creation of this program. So we're excited about it. I know I said a lot, but I just wanted to again, thank all the families that reached out to us and reached out to me. And again, thank you to the families that were willing to have that conversation with me either in person or on a phone call. But that is all I have unless there's any other questions or anything that you might be wondering about.
Trustee Jazinski.
Thanks for that summary. That's really helpful, Dr. Yuranis. One of the other things that we've been hearing from the community and in public comment is this concern about screen time, right? As we talk about media and digital literacy and future skills and things like that, right? We, I think our gut reaction is of course, digital literacy means always looking at things digitally. I'm really, really excited to hear that you're going to select the team and let them really own that new content and curriculum for our students. But could you comment, address that concern a little bit about how we're going to strike that balance?
Yeah, thank you. That's a great question. That was also another common theme in all the families that had, that were able to speak or meet with me, their concern about the digital component and them thinking that it's going to be more screen time. One of the family members or parents that communicated during the public comment earlier did talk about iReady. It's a diagnostic program that we use. It is computer based. It's phenomenal, but they're very true in the sense that you are working with that computer directly and engage with the learning paths. And we have Chromebooks and we've talked before about our tech plan and how at the K-5 level, you know, all those classrooms have enough devices to support that student learning. And the teachers that have been excited about the opportunity that this presents itself, I do not believe that we're going to be in a situation where students are going to be put in front of a device and interact with that device, for that device to do that teaching and learning. I think that we're going to help students better understand how to engage with research and how to understand digital literacy and what that really means. And then engaging with digital citizenship and the project based learning. Yeah, this, we do not want this to be something that's a screen time type thing. But I, that's one of the things that I understood about all the complaints and concerns was, you know, there are districts that have run similar STEM programs. And part of that component is a digitally computer based program. And that's not our plan at all, yeah, at all. But yeah, thank you for bringing that up. That was definitely a concern I heard throughout all my communications.
Trustee Van Heijtma.
I just have a question too. So just for my understanding, so these new positions, these library positions, we, it's replacing kind of the one on one swap from the Spanish teachers.
Yeah.
So are they going to have like structured classes? Or how is that going to work?
Yeah, that's a great question. So our current structure is all of our elementary classrooms do have a schedule where they visit the media center. But since it's a paraprofessional and not a certified teacher, that opportunity is not being able to be counted as planning time for our elementary teachers. So they do have to stay with our students. So the current structure is every one of those classes already is scheduled in. What'll happen now is since it's a certified teacher, it'll be 50 minute blocks of time for those students to be dropped off with that certified teacher. And then the classroom teacher will be able to use that part as the planning time that we owe them and that they need to prepare for other subjects and content areas. So we've got the, working with Mr. Walensky and our team to develop the special schedule that's going to be structured in a way. And we'll have four of these library media teachers and they'll work at two buildings. You know, they won't be there every day. Our current structure is kind of that way. With our specials teachers, you're not in the building five days a week to support those buildings and kids. So yeah, we'll have a schedule. We'll have the support in place. And yeah, we're excited about what that's going to bring.
Anybody else? Thank you, Dr. Yuranis.
Oh, you know, I do have one more thing, Mr. Chorworski. I apologize. So I do want to bring your attention, please, our board to item 12.2.1, our technology intergovernmental agreement, IGA, with Oakland Schools. As discussed in our last finance and facilities meeting, we talked about the restructuring of this contract since we take, we took on a full time tech director and kind of reduced the tech supervisor role. Kind of that rolled up into everything, brought us a reduction of about 7,000 from compared to last year's IGA contract with Oakland Schools. So I bring that here for your consideration, item 12.2.1.
Great. Do we have a motion for 12.2.1? Trustee Cook.
Resolved that the superintendent is authorized to finalize and sign an intergovernmental agreement, IGA, for technology services between Royal Oak Schools and Oakland Schools as attached.
Do we have a second? Trustee Alexander. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing on a call for a vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
So 13, I'm sorry, 12.3 this evening is finance facilities in band. And we'll go back to Ms. Abella.
Thank you. I have two items on tonight's agenda for your consideration. 12.3.1 is the millage rate certification. We discussed this earlier during the truth and taxation hearing and also last week at finance and facilities.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for 12.3.1? Trustee Van Heijtma.
Be it resolved that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education approves the 25-26 millage rate, the L429 form as presented in the board packet.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Trustee Wiki. Any discussion on the motion before us? Seeing on a call for the vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you.
The other is 12.3.2 on tonight's agenda. It's ROM's kitchen equipment. We discussed this last week at finance and facilities We discussed this last week at finance and facilities and reviewed the bid tab. It's to alter the cold wells at Royal Oak Middle School, also part of the food service fund.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for twelve point three point two? Trustee Jazinski.
Resolved that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to finalize and sign a contract with Stafford Smith Incorporated in the amount of forty-six thousand, eight hundred, thirty-five dollars and twenty cents.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Trustee Cook. Is there any discussion on the motion before us? See now, I'll call for a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mrs. Bella. Twelve point four is staff and student services, and we'll go to Mr. Walensky.
Thank you, Mr. Chorski. I have, I'll do a brief enrollment update for you, followed by five items for your approval. Dr. Yanis, I apologize. You asked me earlier, how many combined DK and kindergarten children we had? I said four oh seven. It's actually four hundred and nine. I taught, so it's two more. I, I always talk about, it's two, it's two more. I always talk about DK and kindergarten enrollment because it's a good indicator of will our enrollment be up or down, as I always say. You can predict first through twelfth grade by the grade that's moving up. Ms. Bella's budget assumption, as she said earlier, was zero. It, it might be close, but interesting, we have four hundred and nine children enrolled for developmental kindergarten and kindergarten, four hundred and nine. We started this past year with four hundred and fifty-six, so we're four hundred, forty-seven short, but there's a lot of time left to enroll. It's an unknown. But interesting about schools of choice, the enrollments, enrollment is up. I, I don't know if these people will all materialize, but they applied, they were accepted, and they have physically submitted enrollment paperwork. It's up significantly. I shared with you before that, um, in the past five years, the, the numbers have been consistent. We have averaged one hundred and seventy-seven applications. We got one hundred and seventy-six this year. So I predicted, because we've enrolled an average of sixty-seven in the last five years, we're enrolled sixty-seven, well, we've already enrolled one hundred and thirty-five. So we're up quite a bit if they all materialize. The biggest indicator of a change would be grades one through eight. The average in the past five years has been twenty-nine schools of choice, children in grades one through eight. We currently have eighty enrolled, so we're, we're up quite a bit there. So hopefully, Ms. Bella, our enrollment will, will be up a little bit. But I'll keep you posted. I do have the five items, I think I said, five items for your approval. All right, I'll do them quick. The first one being the personnel report, I'll go through that for you quickly. It's item twelve point four point one on tonight's agenda. You will see four retirement notifications, two resignations, two recommendations for hire, two internal moves, and one leave of absence request or request for a leave. Let me talk about the retirements quickly, which now bring our total to fourteen. Ms. Bella, you may have been thinking of teacher retirements, and I believe it's eleven teacher retirements. Barbara Miller is one of our retirement notifications. She is currently a para educator for Royal Oak Middle School, and she has worked for the district since March of 2013. Karen Erwin, a special education teacher at Royal Oak High School. Karen has been with the district since nineteen ninety-six, so twenty-nine years. Joe Hamraki, social studies teacher at ROMs. Joe's been here in Royal Oak since nineteen ninety-three, so thirty-two years. And Lynn Legg, a physical therapist for Adams Early Childhood Center. Lynn has been with the district since nineteen ninety-three as well, so also thirty-two years. On the report, you'll also see two teacher end-of-year resignations, and as I said, one childcare leave of absence and two internal moves. The internal moves, Mary Warden has been our benefits coordinator, been exceptional in that role. She is going to move from that role to my administrative assistant. I always say I have the longest title in the world, but Mary actually does. She will be the administrative assistant to the executive director for staff and student services for Royal Oak Schools. And Teresa Baumann, we did some change in assignments. She is, has been our enrollment coordinator. She is going to assume enrollment and pupil accounting as Sarah Molnar, who we contract with through Oakland Schools, is leaving, I believe, June twentieth. And that is the summer, summary of our enrollment, or I'm sorry, our personnel report.
Do we have a motion for item twelve point four point one? Trustee Anderson.
Resolved that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education approves the regular personnel changes as presented in the board packet.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Trustee Wiki. Is there any discussion on the motion? See now, I'll call for a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Okay, item twelve point, boy, this, there we go, twelve point four point two is a recommendation to amend the, um, our contract with Shield, the company who provides hallway and ground supervision at Royal Oak High School and Royal Oak Middle School. And the amendment is just to increase their compensation for year two of this current contract, as I presented at facilities and finance, with the rationale for it. It really, although we're currently under contract with them, it would be an increase to enable them to pay their employees a bit more per hour and bring them in alignment with the other thirty districts that they contract with. And in addition to that, they went at three percent, so next year it's, uh, that increase that I shared at facilities and finance, and then the following two years it would be a three percent increase.
Do we have a motion for twelve point four point two? Trustee Van Heidsma.
Be resolved that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to finalize and sign a contract amendment with SEC Shield LLC for July one, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Trustee Alexander. Is there any discussion on the motion? See now, I'll call for a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, and then the next three are tentative agreements with three of our bargaining, three of our four bargaining units. The first one, item twelve point four point three is a recommendation to approve a tentative agreement we have reached with our Royal Oak School Psychologists Association, and that tentative agreement is effective, would go into effect July one, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-eight. We employ, it's our smallest bargaining unit, eight psychologists total, am I correct? Eight point eight, sorry. And that is item twelve point four point three.
Do we have a motion for twelve point four point three? Trustee Jazinski. Like, we're getting tired. No one's raising their hands.
Resolved that the Royal Oak Schools Board of Education hereby ratifies the collectively bargained and tentatively agreed upon master agreement with the Royal Oak Schools Psychologists Association effective July first, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Trustee Cook. Any discussion on the motion before us? See now, I'll call for a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, item twelve point four point one is a recommendation to approve a tentative agreement with the Royal Oak Education Support Association. This one would be for four years, and it's to get us off that three-year cycle with our other bargaining units. So a four-year agreement to start June thirtieth, I'm sorry, July first of twenty-five through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-nine. Within that group are employed currently one hundred and twenty-five paraeducators and forty secretaries. So that's our second largest bargaining unit.
Do we have a motion for twelve point four point one, point four? Trustee Alexander.
Resolved that Royal Oak Schools Board of Education hereby ratifies the collectively bargained and tentatively agreed upon master agreement with the Royal Oak Educational Support Association effective July first, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Trustee Wiki. Any discussion on the motion before us? See now, I'll call for a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried.
Okay, and lastly, item twelve point four point five is a recommendation to approve a tentative agreement with the Royal Oak Association of School Administrators. This would be a three-year contract effective July one, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth of twenty twenty-eight, and we employ twenty-seven employee administrators in that bargaining unit.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for twelve point four point five? Trustee Cook.
Resolved that Royal Oak Schools Board of Education hereby ratifies the collectively bargained and tentatively agreed upon master agreement with the Royal Oak Association of School Administrators effective July one, twenty twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. Twenty twenty, that's an eight, or six, eight, sorry, eight.
It is an eight. Thank you. Is there a second? Trustee Wiki. Any discussion on the motion before us? Trustee Van Heidsma.
Not specific to this, but just in general, I wanted to just thank everybody for the work they did on the, getting us to these three done, so it's greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Trustee Wiki.
Just a quick question. We have one, assuming ratification of all of these, which we've done almost all of them already. We have one remaining. That's going to be on a four-year cycle?
The RO, ROEA, our teachers' union, our biggest group, would be on a three-year circle, cycle, and we're very close.
Okay, well, that's good.
Yeah.
But that means we've moved one.
Yeah.
How many bargaining units? We have four?
There are four, so instead of having all four of them, and, and really, ROESA, our support association, and the ROEA are the ones we want to get on a different cycle. They're our biggest groups and they take a little bit longer.
Okay.
But I do, I, I want to acknowledge the president, Carrie Terminer, is here, and the vice president, Mallory Greenway, and we've been collaborating and working so well together, and we're almost done.
Excellent.
Thank you. Any other discussion on the motion? See now, I'll call for a vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Walensky. Let's see, item thirteen on tonight's agenda, which is public comment. Same rules as the first. Is there anybody from the audience who wishes to speak? See none? Moving on to item fourteen tonight, which is board comments and liaison reports. We have three committees that have met since our last meeting, starting with communications, and I will ask Trustee Van Heidsma to give a synopsis of that last meeting.
So I have twenty pages of notes here that I'll go through.
Awesome. We're going to take another twenty-minute break.
Just kidding, just kidding. Communications committee just met this past week. We were actually at the high school. It was a nice change for the venue. A lot of conversation about, you know, our website, conversations about the website, the product we use for communication, talking about the district dispatch and a refresh of the district dispatch, just to kind of make it a little different, right? So sometimes we kind of get used to seeing the same thing, so one thing, one option to change is to, to change that look. And so we talked through and looked at a few different samples from Berkeley, Birmingham, here on Valley Northville. Good, talked about getting some mock-up work done over the summer, so we'll have an opportunity to see some of that before the fall with the goal of having some things in place by the fall, I mean, by August, I'm sorry. We talked about doing a communication survey. We walked through a couple of the different, the student, uh, the student, the family and the staff survey. What are the important things we want to see? What types of communication really are people looking for from us? We're always cautious about overcommunicating, but we also want to be good communicators, right? So really doing a review of that, and so the survey will be coming out. We'll see a draft of that as well this summer, and so surveying both our staff and our families. We talked about, I'm trying to be very quick here, so, talked about some of the awards that we've received for composting, the Oakland one-hundred-year for Oakland, some of the video series. What else here? Mr. Conrad and Jarrett talked a bit about our upcoming co-op student for next year, Amelia. Looking forward to having a co-op student again. Mr. Conrad talked a bit about podcasting and some things to do with that coming up in the fall. And, let's see. Oh, and talking about one of the other areas of communication that's an opportunity is communicating with our students. So I see our students here in the audience. We talked a bit about, I don't know if this is true, students don't look at their emails. Is that true, students, or not?
Yes. The answer is yes. I do sometimes email my friends just to see when they're.
So, so in addition to just talking about communication for, to our staff and to our families, it's also about communication to our students. And so that's another opportunity that we have on, on, which is really important. And we, as always, look at the statistics from our social media every meeting as well. So that's, that's my quick synopsis.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Trustee Van Heidsma? See now, we'll move on to curricular, curriculum advisory committee and Trustee Cook.
So at our past curriculum committee meeting, we talked a lot about AI. Seems to be top of mind in a lot of places. And our district is working on a guidance document to help guide our staff on how and when we're using AI in the classroom. And also, there is going to be selection of AI platforms that will be approved by the district. So that's very important for the securing student data is that we use approved AI platforms. And so that's something that our district is working on. And, let's see. We've been working with Oakland Schools on, on this initiative, and that was, the, the majority of our, our meeting was based on AI. And I do want to say, just kind of on the topic of our media text, that was something that was brought up in relation to that as well, is that the elementary, that there would be media texts, and we talked about research skills and helping students to understand how to vet out credible sources of information, and so that will be another way that those media texts will be utilized in our schools.
Thank you. Any questions for Trustee Cook? See now, move on to health and wellness with Trustee Wiki.
Okay, so we met, and one of the nice things about being in the health and wellness committee is there's usually a food service component, which means that Mike Jacob shows up and he brings food, which he did. He brought some interesting, small, cup-sized vegetable medley snacks that people could eat. I didn't. He also brought cookies. I ate those. And I'm, I told him tonight, and I'm, let's say again, they were delicious. He said basically, you know, the way that, you know, overall, our, our food service program, we, we served, I think, like ten thousand more lunches this year than we did last year, and maybe twenty thousand more breakfasts this year than we did last year. And he's got, they just had some really creative ideas, like, you couldn't prove this by me, but apparently there are some side dishes that in, when given to elementary school students that maybe can be mood enhancers or can help stabilize their mood or something. And he had like pictures of glazed carrots that were supposed to heighten awareness. It was very interesting. And in the high school, he also mentioned how they had had some themed meals, like meals representing different countries, like Indian food or Mexican food or Italian food. So I guess the students here could tell us whether those are big hits or not. I see a little bit of positive support out there, so that's good. So food service component of this was good. The composting component was, eh, I'm sorry, Marianne, but it was a little lackluster, only because it's, it's a pretty good program at the, at the elementary schools. It works pretty effectively. It doesn't seem like we have enough support in the high school. We may have some candidates. We need anywhere from nine to ten students to help, help, you know, support the compost, on a daily basis, help support the composting posting program. And we believe in it as a district, so you guys are now our representatives. No guilt, I'm, I don't want to put any pressure on you, but, and we, you know, we pay about twenty-five thousand dollars a year for the compostable boats, they call them, the food comes in, right? And another thirty-five thousand a year just as a district to have our compost picked up. So it's, it's not free. It's not the most expensive thing we do, but it, it, I think we as a district feel important about this, but we'd like the program to be effective. There's, and Mary Beth, I don't know, you had brought up something about a program called Face Addiction Now. I didn't get a lot of good notes on that, but it, it's something that you're recommending that we look into, as well as some sort of support district-wide for us to have Narcan training. So I, I don't know where we're going with that, but at least it, it was on the committee. And you, almost always on the wellness committee, there's some discussion about the impact of vaping in high school, what we're doing to try to combat it, how, whether we're taking an educational approach, whether we're putting QR, QR codes in the, in the bathrooms, so I assume so people can report people vaping in the bathrooms. I'm sure you guys know nothing about that, but, so that's, there's always an issue in a number of things around vaping that we're considering. There's always a support for, or callouts from students or people who are there about how much they appreciate the psychological support available at the high school. And Mike Jacobs also recommended that for next year's wellness committee, we make sure we go, we should get some school principals on the wellness committee. If he's, he's been around long enough, he can remember when we, that was, that was that way before, and he would like to see that again. He recommends it.
Do you have any questions for Trustee Wiki? See now, thank you. And we'll move on to board liaison reports and board comments. Trustee Jazinski.
Yeah, those were our liaison reports, right?
Yes.
Okay. I just had two quick things that I wanted to kind of add to wrap up some of these conversations. One of the things that I always feel like a huge amount of pride in during our board meetings in particular is how well kind of our vision, especially with our strategic plan, begins to come together, right? As we talk about all these different things, that our policies are aligned with our curriculum work, are aligned with the students and the staff that we celebrate. And I just, I had, I had wanted to add it at the end of our presentation because I was assuming our, my fellow board members were going to have a ton of questions, and then Superintendent Mary Beth did such a nice job with our safety presentation, they didn't have any questions. But, but my role on that committee and that advisory group is, is to really bring, right, our side of the table to those conversations, making sure that our policy is aligned and that the, the things that we are committed to are, are lining up with the decisions that we're making, as well as being able to be spokespeople, right? That the, the board is better informed about our safety procedures and our plans. And I think, as Pat put really well, and I think you can hear the pride when he talks about it, that even though when we talk about our emergency planning, our brains always go to the, the worst-case scenarios in which we would use those things, but they really, I'm incredibly proud of us for how holistic our approach is to. but they really, I'm incredibly proud of us for how holistic our approach is to our efforts about student safety, right? And when we say student safety is the number-one thing that we do, we don't mean our SROs in the buildings, right? We mean that we are constantly thinking about the ways to help make a student feel safe every time they walk into the building, and that is our trauma-informed practices. That's our preventative measures. That's the policies that we review. And I think, you know, I just want to make sure that we're on record saying that. I think that that is an important part of our EOP, is that it's not just the response, it's the preventative work that we're doing as well. And kind of in that same vein, and why I wanted to make sure that we read the gun safety month proclamation this month, too. I do have information by the door for us to share about our state's safe storage laws. There's gun locks available for you if you want, and some stickers. But I just, yeah, I'm very proud of the work that we're doing and excited to come back to you in the fall to talk about some of the new things that we've gotten stored.
Superintendent Fitzpatrick.
Thank you. So on that, I also made a note to add. In addition to the gun locks, and we thank the Michigan State Police for providing those to our families for free, one of the things I've talked about is whether you are a gun owner or not. There are many folks in our community that are, and we want all of them to be responsible and for students to be safe, and children and everyone to be safe in those homes. And so there has been a change made to the Michigan laws regarding safe gun storage. And so one of the things that have been brought to us as a committee and as a district in the past is that our parents are informed of those changes, and so our parents can look forward at the annual registration, which usually opens around the 1st of August here. There will be a form in there just informing parents about that. Whether you are a gun owner or not, we are informing parents that the law has changed with regard to that and being responsible safe gun owners. And we talked tonight, I talked tonight with a parent, and said, you know, today, sleepovers, visits to, you know, other people's homes. You know, I used to ask if the parents would be home, and now I know parents are asking, do you own guns, and are they in your home, and are they secure when children go to visit? And so it's even through education like that that I believe our committee has a huge impact and that we need our entire community coming around. So you can look forward to that form being in the packet in August as a way to just spread the message and keep our children safe.
Thank you. Anybody else? Go down the line. Trustee Van Heidsma.
I was just going to give just another shout-out to our students for sticking through the whole meeting. Don't worry, they're not all this long. And Dr. Tofalski, they really are not all this long. I know that-
I love you all.
But, but thank you, students, really, for sticking it out with us. It's really appreciated, and look forward to, you know, having some meetings in the fall. And just an add-on, had reached out to Karen Powell at Churchill as well, and having student lunch with the students from Churchill, too. So really about engaging with our students, hearing student voice in all these spaces, and so really looking forward to meeting with you guys in the fall. And I'll send you an email. Just checking, just checking.
Trustee Cook.
Okay, so you may have noticed that last month I was not here at the board meeting, and that was because I was helping to chaperone the Royal Oak Middle School, Washington, DC trip. And so I just want to give a good shout-out to all of the teachers, paraeducators, social workers, counselors, administrators, and chaperones that helped to make that such a great success. It was a terrific, although exhausting, four-day trip. They really do keep you busy. The students were phenomenal, and I think they all learned a great deal, and it was a terrific experience. And I want to say that I won this sticker, well, actually, my son won this sticker, so that's from the trip, too. They had some trivia on the bus, and so the kids got to get stickers, so it was wonderful. Thank you.
Trustee Anderson.
A couple things. I can't believe I, Trustee Van Heidsma, didn't mention the Royal Oak Schools Foundation will have their golf outing June 23. It's at Metamora. If you golf, we'd love to have you join us. It's a wonderful day for a good cause. And if you don't golf, you can come and have lunch with us. They have a barbecue pitmaster, and it's fantastic. The other thing is, is we got to participate in two graduations recently, and the Royal Oak High School graduation was amazing, as always. Lovely night, great speeches, very heartwarming, and we all enjoy it. Churchill's was right here in this room, and that is always a very moving evening. And I do think it may be the first time I've seen a dog as an honorary graduate, but it was, that made it extra special for me, so. Gosh, the guest speaker, yes. We had a Supreme Court Justice, Michigan Supreme Court Justice Richard Bernstein was here, and his speech was amazing and very inspirational. So I think you can watch that. I think it's on the channel, and I think you can watch it, and it's well worth it.
Trustee Alexander.
I'll be really, really fast as we close out the meeting tonight. We did so much talk today about safety and feeling safe, and I want to thank my colleagues on the board here for passing the pride resolution for the fifth time. It's been five years since I introduced it, and every year it is reaffirmed, and I do appreciate that. And I'm sure the students and staff do as well. Thank you so much. Anything from this end? Superintendent Fitzpatrick? Are you sure? Pinky promise?
Senior, further business. In front of this body, we are adjourned at 9:43.